Displacement or relocation of any persons or businesses. And now it's plans to assist persons actually displaced since this project will not result with displacement or relocation of any persons or businesses, there is no plans being made to assist displaced person. I would like to add that it was between North Street and Fifth Street. And then you're much further along than twenty-one percent, however, this is, um, takes time for these things to come back through, so.
You're down with your life now?
Oh, okay.
You have to hear me butcher that. Any further comments? Questions from the public?
Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
Further discussion? Sue?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Public hearing is now closed.
Do we need to act to accept the, uh, public hearing update?
I don't think any action needs to be made, it's just a matter of fact notice to the public.
Okay.
All right, on to business. Discussion with Adam, is it Coil?
Coil, correct.
Adam Coil, ordinance enforcement. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I, I, um, Doug, you called me, um, and so I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and Councilpeople, to come here tonight, um, so just wanted to discuss, um, I guess kind of what you guys are looking for as far as code enforcement, uh, within the city of Maxwell, and then the, the costs that would be incurred with that if I were to do the code enforcement services for you guys, so, um, you know, making, as far as, as far as what I do right now, I currently am a community compliance specialist for the city of West Des Moines, um, which I do nuisance codes, um, zoning, some zoning stuff, um, which I think would cover most of anything that, that Maxwell does, um, and, um, sign enforcement, um, stuff like that, but, uh, deal with pretty much exterior properties. I, the only time I go on interiors, if it's like a hoarding situation, it's not going to owner occupied and not a rental, so rental, there are renters to it, but, um, it's something that, that can be done, so, um, as far as what you guys are looking for, I'm not exactly sure, but, um.
I think my understanding of what the council and myself are looking for in our community is an independent set of eyes, that you come in and evaluate the community on a, on a, as needed basis, uh, with the initial committed view of every property in town.
Sure.
And identify, um, what the council needs to take action on. Um, and just for what I, my belief on the council's standpoint is, is it just, it removes that personal aspect of having to deal with somebody who might be our neighbor, or it might even be one of us.
Sure.
And having that, uh, that third party that's not responsible to anybody except for presenting the information to the council for them to take action on is probably what we're looking for. That I sum it up pretty well.
Yes, all thanks to you.
Yeah.
Then who takes the action on it?
Well, the council.
So, yeah, and my question to you is, are you guys, is that somewhere you guys would provide notices then, um, to the, to the residents, or?
So we would, we would probably most likely need your assistance in walking through the steps of our nuisance abatement code to ensure that we are following all the steps and meeting the code compliance requirements, um, as well as legal requirements.
Okay.
Any thoughts?
I think we envision that, uh, the compliance officer, uh, would, uh, uh, do a tour around town, uh, identify, and maybe the first tour around town would just be, uh, uh, junk vehicles. And bring it back to the council, saying here's a list, uh, of what appears, what appears to be junk vehicles, uh, and, you know, then, uh, we would contact the property owner and, uh, do the letter saying that, uh, you know, if the vehicle, uh, doesn't work, uh, if it's missing a window or whatever, uh, then it's a junk vehicle needs to be removed, and we would continue down the steps, you know, uh, not every vehicle parked on, uh, in a backyard is a junk vehicle, uh, so, uh, this is where we've run into problems in the past. We go, we've each taken an area of town, we've looked at our area, and we compile a list, but there's inconsistencies between one councilperson's view and another councilperson's view, and so you, you don't have an equal application of the ordinance. So that's what we're looking for, is one equal application of the ordinance.
So part of that was is that we were also looking to identify, just starting off with something along the lines of, we want you to take care of junk vehicles for Christmas, and having you review the town for junk vehicles and bring us a list, we'll deal with junk vehicles, and then the next time we call you, we need you to come through and review for, um, dilapidated junk vehicles or unsafe, that type of, working, working through all of the, all the things on our, on our code.
Restraing and peeling paint.
Yes.
Okay, um, and, I mean, so typically what I do when I go to a property is I'll, I'll, I'll look at, I mean, the way I do it right now is, is, um, what I call reactive enforcement, that's what the city council of West Des Moines, you know, what they, what they prefer for the city, so, which means, you know, if we get a complaint, then we go out and we investigate, um, if we see other things, you know, we, we cite them for all those things, um, on the property. Um, that would be my suggestion for you guys, but you guys can, I mean, obviously do it however you want, um.
So you think it'd be more efficient to look at, at all aspects of the property, including vehicles?
Yeah, and, and, and so how I would do it in those situations is I would give one notice, but it would have, it might have different timelines, so a junk vehicle might be a two-week timeline, a dilapidated house, depending on the condition, you know, the code says that we have to give them a reasonable amount of time, so, you know, it could be up to six months, and, and even then, um, what, what I do and what I would recommend is if there's continual progress, then you continually, you know, push them along and give, extend it if, if they warrant it. So if they don't, then, then you take the next steps, but the next steps are costly for the city because then you're getting attorneys and all, so.
Personally feel that would be better than having a letter sent from the city, is to have you be able to do it because they know that somebody else is looking and it's not one of us.
And, and so, and just, just so you guys understand, you know, if I were to send one, it would be from the city, but I would be the one administered it, so, um, and, and it's not necessarily from you guys, it's an outside person looking at it, but, um, but the city essentially is the complainant in that situation, um, and not their neighbor, you know, or anything like that, and the city's the complainant, but, um, I always let people know, it's nothing personal, you know, like, you know, they, they say, I don't like this or whatever, but, but say, you know, I don't agree with all the code either all the time, but it's the law, and, you know, and we enforce the law, and then if, if you want something changed, you can, you know, you can come to the council and ask them, you know, so if the majority wants to change the law, but that's, that's the way it is, and, um, people, people understand, and people understand that the properties sometimes are not, not kept up, and, um, they know that needs, something needs to be done, they just need some, some urging.
Go ahead.
You said in West Des Moines, uh, the, uh, council has asked you, uh, to respond to complaints, and to not go cruising.
I mean, if there's something obvious, or if the next door neighbor has the same exact thing, then, then we will, I mean.
Well, West, West Des Moines has, what, a hundred thousand people?
Yeah, seventy some, yeah.
Seventy? Oh, they haven't made a hundred million, okay, well, seventy thousand, we have maybe, uh, an eightieth of a.
Yeah.
And if you just wait for a complaint, then it becomes more obvious that you have, uh, uneven enforcement of the ordinance. If you're not supposed to have junk vehicles and somebody complains because they have a, uh, tiff against their neighbor, but they do have junk vehicles.
Right.
And somebody two blocks away, uh, or four blocks away has just as many junk vehicles, a small town, that, uh, uneven enforcement, uh, becomes more obvious.
And, and, and I, I, I agree, a hundred percent, so, and I, and so you guys know, I'm from a small town, I live in Van Meter, um, you know, we have between twelve and fifteen hundred people or less, and, and I've served on the council for a couple of terms, so I, I understand exactly, exactly what you're talking about, um, and I agree with the idea of, you know, your initial startup is that you address, I would, I would suggest addressing the, you know, the biggest issues first, because people will see, like, that's what people are going to think of, if they, if they get something, they've got a couple of things, and the guy, you know, the guy up the street's got everything and he hasn't got a notice yet, um, but, um, but I would say, yeah, I'd say, you want to hit everything at first, and then, you know, it's up to you guys if, you know, are you want to do it from there, if you want, as you get complaints, or as you guys see things, or, or, um, or if you want just, uh, every so often come cruise the town, but, I mean, it's, it's a process getting everything cleaned up for the first time, and then after that, it starts to set the expectation and, um.
And I think that the follow-up is probably just as impactful as the first time through, uh, that we have something in place where, you know, okay, there's six months, but knowing that you're going to follow up on it in that six months' time, uh, is really where you see that change. In addition to that, it's very similar to the same situation of, this isn't a once and done, this is, uh, if we bring somebody in to do this now, he's, needs to be here next year, and the year after, and the year after to stay on top of it, otherwise it's, it then reverts.
And the community needs to be aware of it, there's somebody checking, time to clean it up, guys.
And keep it that way.
Yeah.
So what are your rates?
So what, what I would charge is, um, eighty dollars an hour, um, it's a, it's a two-hour minimum if I'm traveling, so if it's something that I have to travel for, um, it'd be a two-hour minimum, um, plus mileage, but, um, anything that I don't have to travel for, or anything beyond two hours, it'd be billed on a fifteen-minute increment, so, um, and, and I would keep a spreadsheet that would be submitted on a monthly basis of any, any activity that I had to do, but.
Fifteen minutes, you can drive around the whole town.
You drive around and we can, can do all the notices, I'll pay for it, so, yeah, um, so, um, and as far as the travel time, if more cities come on, onboard, then I would split up that travel time equally between any cities I hit at the same time, um, you know, try and, try and, uh, make it as cost-effective as possible.
Have you talked to any other cities yet?
I have not, um, I was going to, working at a startup, you guys, see, see how this went, and, um, see what the level of interest is, this is new for me as far as, um, doing a side job, um, you know, it's something that I thought about doing just because I know that there's other code enforcement people within the state that, you know, you've got one southeast area, one, uh, northwest area, um, that, that do something, there's a couple of counties that have, have actually county code enforcement staff for the entire county, um, and so, uh, but, yeah, it's something I've been, been thinking about doing as I step into my next phase of life here with my, my youngest son being a senior in high school, so.
So you're full-time with West Des Moines at this time?
Correct.
Uh, and so your trips out here would probably be weekends?
Yeah, so I get off, I get done there at three-thirty, so I either come after, after work or on weekends.
Yeah, this time of year it'd be dark.
Yeah.
Right. Summer, you have some?
Yeah.
Significant time to do that for us. And, uh, do you have a, uh, contract that you work from?
I do not, but I would probably create one, I'd probably create one so that way, I think that'd be the best way to do business to them.
You'd just be your own LLC then?
Correct, yeah, I would start my own, my own business and, um, and I'd register it with the state.
Would you have a minimum contract requirement?
Um, I, I would, I would say hours-wise, but I would say, you know, probably length, you know, if, if I'm going to invest, you know, because I, I would have to do a little bit of investment into it as far as creating the company, doing, getting the equipment, um, you know, I will, I, I photo document everything for sure, um, I'm debating doing the body cam, I do body cams where I'm at, um, but it's just a way to protect myself and the city, um, in any incident, so, but definitely photo document everything and, then have everything that I would submit to, to the city staff on a regular basis, so that way, that way if there's a call in here, city staff would have, they could give you guys the information, um, it'll all be available to you, so.
Well, I'd move that we, uh, move forward with, uh, Adam and, uh, ask for a contract, uh, uh, that would be, uh, initially a one-year contract, and, uh, move from there.
A second.
Further discussion?
I, I do want to just bring, I think, just, just thinking through the whole process, so, um, you know, because when, when you guys do this, it is kind of a commitment beyond just me, um, you know, sometimes there's legal that's involved, um, and then also on the backend, if people aren't, um, wanting to bring their property into compliance, you know, is this a ci, is the city going to want to be able to invest in the abatements, um, on that, and so a lot of times those have a front-end cost that could sit there a while, um, but you can submit those, if, if the people don't pay for the abatement cost, then you can submit those to the county for, uh, collection with their property taxes, um, but just wanted to.
We've gone through abatement a couple of times in the last, uh, all like twenty years, uh, with various people, uh, so, uh, we know it can be, uh, that you can put on the taxes, and then you can end up with the property which really has no value, uh, and you have additional costs, uh, to level it and do something with it, uh, so, yeah, there's all kinds of bad things that can happen, uh, that mean that is additional cost.
Yeah.
But the first step is an equal, uh, application of the ordinance, uh, or changing the ordinance so that, uh, you don't have that, you know, anymore.
I can see the good side.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean.
Getting cleaned up and, and other people seeing it, and hey, we'd better do something with ours.
And I have a very high success rate of, of getting people to work with me, I mean, as soon as they, as soon as they let go of the personal side of it, and they look at the realistic side of it, um, you know, and then, and then they start to work with me, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, a good balance between being firm, but being fair with them and giving them an opportunity to, to get things done.
All right, any further discussion?
You have the address for the city to submit the contract?
Yes, it, it, I would, you guys have a timeline as far as wanting to?
Well, but we're not, we're not going to ask you to, to go out when it's twenty below either, so, yeah, the sooner the better, but, you know, if it takes thirty days, at least we'll be getting to a, a warmer time of year.
I'd say, give me, give me some time to, I'd like to look into the company first, um, and get that, and get that going if I can, if not, um, I can draw the contract with a company name to be determined, but, or just with myself, um, but.
Would it be helpful for you to have the information that we as council members gathered on our trips around to look over?
Um, I would say, I would say, yes, but I, I would just include what I, what I did, what I do, so.
Yeah, but that might give you a starting point of where there is.
I'd almost just rather that you just start on its own, and simply because then there is no bias.
Oh, okay, I just, I was just thinking, if I were doing it, it might give me a starting point, whether I start on north, south, or west.
Well, his, his starting point is knowing what West Des Moines looks like, but also understanding what, uh, you said Van Meter?
Yeah.
What Van Meter looks like, knowing what a small town is about, so, um, I think he's probably got enough experience between the two communities to understand, know what, know what it looks like.
Just trying to help a little bit, you know, because I'd like to have an idea of what I'm looking for.
Fifty years ago, I did the compliance plan for Van Meter.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Awesome.
So I, I doubt if it's even the library anymore, it's probably all, uh, composted.
All right. Joe?
Yes.
Sue? Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
All right, well, we're looking forward to seeing the contract.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Really hard discussion, action on resolution twenty-five, twenty-two-five-zero-one, approving pay application number two to Riley Construction, the Maxwell-Balmond Street project.
With approval, so that we can discuss.
Second for, for some discussion.
Discussion.
Five point five days, isn't that the question?
Yeah.
That's one of the big questions.
Yeah, and, and so I talked to Spencer about that, um, and to get an update, um, I don't have the pay-up in front of me, but, um, there's a, there's a, a, a work-through date on that pay-up.
That's why I couldn't find, I asked Spencer what it was.
There usually is anyway. Yeah, so this is work through November thirtieth, so that's five point five days as of November, November thirtieth, if there's additional days after that, that's it, it's, it's a little bit slow of the process because by the time the pay-up get worked through, so that, that five point five days, from my understanding, was through November thirtieth, there may be days after that, I don't know for sure, um, but, you know, the, the one thing that we are tied to is how DOT specifications count working days, um, and so that's, that's how we're doing it, is the way the DOT does it, um, because that's, we got money from them, so we got to play by their rules, so, um, but, yeah, that's, I don't know, I think there's some after that, I know they are on winter shutdown now, which doesn't count working days unless they do work, so every day that they spend working counts as a working day past the date, um, um, up until April first of next year, which starts the continuous clock again.
Next year being two?
I'm sorry, this year, yeah, this year, twenty-twenty-five, I'm still before Christmas, but, yeah, this year, April first, it do, the plan is that everything should be done by then, um, they're, they're hoping that the last few punchless items, some of the pavement stuff.
So you've reviewed the pay-up, and your recommendation is that we process it and approve it, uh, and there are still issues to be resolved in the future?
Yeah, I did not review the pay-up, but Spencer did review the pay-up, um, and with his construction observer, I wouldn't add anything because I'm not in the day-to-day operations of the project, so that's what Spencer is, but.
We just found out a month or so ago that there's a two-week timeframe for us to contest it, or it's locked in as being accurate?
Um, for us to contest it or for the contractor to contest, I think it's for the contractor to contest it, so, so what are?
So we are doing the counting, not the contractor?
Yeah, 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 so, so our observer tracks the, the days worked and, um, for the DOT's rules, and then we tell them, okay, here's what we have, uh, the daily records, you know, I think Spencer's been sharing them with you guys, um, for the working day records, um, that's our record of it, if the contractor disagrees, he has like two weeks to say, no, I was shut down four more days than that because the rain did, you know, whatever the reason is, um, but it's, it's, we're doing the counting, and then the contractor okays it or, or doesn't respond usually, but, um, and then it stands.
So we need to talk to you if we disagree with it?
Well, if we disagree, and, and, and if, and if we disagree, it's got to be on the, the rules for the DOT's, how they have working days, right, so, um, if, if there's a mistake in how we're counting it based on where the DOT would count it, then, yeah, um, but as far as I know, I mean, Spencer and the, the observers we have on, they're, they do DOT work all the time, that's why I have Spencer on the project, because I don't do DOT work, he does all the time, so, um, yeah.
Well, we're looking at seventy-five days original, nine to add-on. That's eighty-four, and when we had our October meeting, you said that there had been one up till that point, so I put another one, that made it eighty-five days.
Okay.
Uh, through that point, um, I counted, I've got through everything that Spencer says.
Okay.
We worked two days this week, we worked, the, the last week I have was, they worked on a Tuesday and a Friday, I think, so there was two there.
Yeah.
Um, through December twenty-first, I've got ninety-six and a half days using Spencer's numbers.
For the, uh, from the reports?
From the reports.
Okay, okay.
And.
Through December first?
Through December twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay.
That was the last time he sent me a, a weekly report.
So that would be eleven days.
Eleven days.
This is five and a half off of that. So, yeah, the, the next pay-up will have another five and a half.
Yeah, so it sounds like, if, if this is through November thirtieth for five and a half days, you've got another twenty days where you said there's another five days in there, that seems reasonable, um, for winter shutdown work.
But us saying yes to this and paying it?
No.
Does not lock us in to agree with the five and a half days?
I don't believe so, I don't believe, I mean, I, I could be wrong on that, because I'm not sure, we prepared the, the, the working days, so we're telling the contractor, this is our record of working days, um, I, I don't know how that works if we find an error in our calculations, I don't know that it ties us to it, if it's, if it's a demonstrable error, but I'd have to check on that, um, but.
So do you think the five and a half days up through November thirtieth is wrong?
I'm not sure, because I've gone further, I, I.
Okay, but this is just through November thirtieth?
Yeah.
I, I didn't know that until just now.
Yes, yep, yep, no, that's.
And I will recalculate, I think it's close, I do have August ninth and September ninth, I believe, that, that I questioned why they weren't counted as days.
Okay.
There are two days in there that I think should be, no rain, no issue of weather.
Was there, was there a?
One of it, they said, there's a footnote on one of them saying that waiting since we had to do this extra line, that we put in that extra.
So then it'll show up as one of the working days.
Well, no, with, with, within their contract period, it is a working day, whether they show up or not, between April first and whenever the winter shutdown starts, after the winter shutdown starts, then if, if they're, if they're not able to do work, the DOT rules makes sense, you can't charge them a working day, um, which is how it's ever set up, you know, I think the winter shutdown was until, what, third week of November? I don't know for sure what it is, but that would make sense, usually.
And they work Saturday.
On Thanksgiving, so that's a likely.
November sixteenth was a Saturday, I don't know how to count that, so.
Yeah, and on Saturdays, if they work on a Saturday, it counts as a working day, if they don't work, it doesn't count.
Right, okay, all right, I'll recalculate that, we're close.
I, I think we're pretty close, from what it sounds like, if we're, if five and a half through November.
There's a couple that I think should be, or we think?
Yeah.
Maybe it should, okay.
Yeah.
My other question on this, not that it really applies to the pay, but they're not working right now, but they have equipment on Fifth Street.
Hmm.
Can we have them do that?
We can certainly ask us.
I don't care if they park it or city.
Is it on the street streets? Because it was last month when I drove past after the meeting, it was sitting there, it was still there.
I sent that to Spencer last Friday.
Is it better to remove the equipment or leave the equipment there because of the pile of dirt?
That, that may be. Well, maybe we have protection. Is, is the pile of dirt planned to be used, or is it just excess material that needs to be removed?
I think it's going, they're going to be using.
Lots of still need it.
Do the sidewalk.
Oh, okay, but they might be able to stockpile it in the parking.
Our parking.
Yeah, it's not real big, but.
The worst part is coming south on Baldwin. You get down there to Fifth where the stop sign is, and that's where they've got a big trailer sitting and a, a vehicle there. And I can show you the picture if you want.
Yeah, no, I, I drove, I remember, I recall it, when I drove it, it was kind of goofy to get through it. Of course, I think it was potentially closed.
Now, there's no reflective barriers, but there's equipment sitting there.
Okay, so, so I think we need to one, either we need to put up barriers, traffic cones. There's cones around it, we have that, but it's good if we get off.
It's not gonna be back till March.
Right, for one, for snow clearing, for other purposes, let's see if we can get it all off.
Yeah, if there's equipment on the west side of the dirt pile, then maybe that should be moved to the east side with the other equipment, just so a truck can make the corner.
At least get it all together where it's.
Even, even Fifth Street west of Baldwin doesn't get the traffic that Baldwin and Fifth Street get.
Oh, move it on to the side street.
Put it in front of Shannon.
But, but the, the yardway side would be an available option.
Yeah, I don't think it's an unreasonable request, and I'll talk to Spencer about it.
Now the road's open.
Yeah, now the road's open, open it or no open it.
Yeah.
But we want it to be open, so let's see if we can, yeah, okay.
Further discussion of the resolution twenty-two-five zero-one payout.
There isn't a hidden charge in there to try to get their mats covered, is there? You, you understand this better than.
Not that I'm aware of, no, we, we pay off the, the bid items that are in there, and so if it's not a bid item, we don't pay it.
Because we had voted that against that on the last round, okay, the other question I had.
Nope, I mean, they can certainly, they could have used the mats, but we're not paying any more than what the bid price was, so that's.
Sue? Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
On to discussion action on the employee handbook.
You really want to stay for the entire meeting, is there anything else on here?
Not particularly, there is, the water line is six nineteen Baldwin, I saw it on the.
Waterline six nineteen Baldwin.
And then get our engineer report, if you want to move them up, I, I'll be okay with that. My wife would do.
And the water line of six nineteen Baldwin, which I didn't bet.
So, G.
G, I move that we adjust the agenda and take six G and then seven G.
Second.
Further discussion? Here you go, Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
All right, discussion action on water line of six nineteen Baldwin Street.
So. I move that the request be denied based upon the report that we used appropriate methods for turning the water on and off, and that it, the work was primarily a deteriorated service.
Can I sign in and ask you, I'm the owner of six one nine Baldwin.
Not yet, sir, just give us one minute, please. I have a motion on the table.
A second.
Further discussion? Go ahead, sir.
What specifically did you look at? My plumber wasn't contacted, you didn't look at the pipe either, I was never contacted, so I'm just curious what information you're discussing?
So, I talked to the observer, our construction observer that was on site, talked to Tony Public Works, I talked to the construction administrator that we worked with, or that, that's with us, to get the background information of what we knew. And that we had some pictures from the observer took, they were all aware of the, of the work when it was done. So, that's, that's, that's what we base it on, just as an analysis of our records.
There was no one on site other than us and the workers, like, the actual pipe itself, I have it, you guys said you were actually going to investigate it now. I've also asked for, requested three times, in person, over the phone, and digitally for a copy of scope and contract. Hasn't been granted, so I'm curious how you can deem it was turned on and off the right amount of times correctly, documentation?
I mean, the documentation we based off is our diary reports, from our construction observer of when the work was done, and also from, uh, reports from Tony, who, Tony's one that operates the, the mains shutting it on and off, because that's how we do it, the city always operates their own valves. And the reason we do that is so we know that he does it right.
That was never the, oh, sorry, that was never the complaint, the city did it. Riley, on multiple occasions, came back, like, while I was home, and said, hey, we're going to shut the water on and off quickly. I've never said it was the city that did it, Riley.
Well, yeah, Riley, Riley doesn't operate the valves. When Riley comes and says, we're going to shut off the, the water, what, I, I, they don't operate the valves, so if they said that to you, what they likely meant was, Tony's going to shut the valve, the water off for us so we can do our work. So Tony operates the actual physical valve.
There was at least two instances where Tony wasn't there. They had repaired a pipe, or said they did, and then literally, and then my neighbor's going to attest to that too, killed the water for a couple minutes, the exact words I was told, and that happened on two or three different occasions. They may have turned it on and off properly when Tony was there, but that's why I wanted a copy of the scope and contract, because I can prove that they turned it on more than the times of the city and Tony was there, so I've talked to him about that as well.
When, when, when you say turn it on, are you talking about the main itself or the water service line?
The, I think it was the main line, because I don't, I don't, I would assume that's what it is, because it was the whole line and it also affected the neighbors. They literally, like, one instance, just standing out back, like, hey, we're going to kill the water real quick. I was like, well, how long will it take? And they said, oh, I don't know, it'll be, you know, twenty, thirty minutes. So that right there, having experience on DOT projects and construction, that's not, that's not authorized, that they can just shut that off. You said Tony should be there, somebody for the city to shut, the guy that screwed up his own fix on a construction company, killing the waters from flights that are making adjustments. That's not, that's not okay. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
And like the fact that nobody ever asked or looked into this is why I'm confused how they can just deem it as I, without asking me or Frank or any of the other people that dealt with that situation.
I think part of this also lies in the, the service line restrictions as to, this is your service line to your home, which becomes the city or the property owner's responsibility. Had you discussed with the city prior to doing a full line replacement, we wouldn't have replaced the entire line, we would have came in and patched what was needed, which also would have been probably not what you're looking for, so.
I, I have that in writing. Tony, you just said Tony and referenced him as a representative of the city. Well, you were out of town, and I called him on the phone, answered text, and asked him, hey, go ahead and replace it, and he said, yeah. So I took that as the city telling me to replace it, and then we'll deal with it later.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, is there, based upon the information presented tonight, do you have any additional questions, Wes?
I mean, it, it, it sounds like there's some, some different recollections of what had occurred, based on what we had found in our inquiries. If the contractor did operate the, the valve independent of the city, I don't know that. I was told that they did not, but that doesn't exclude them running out there and doing it quick, but generally contractors know better than that, because if, once they touch the city's system like that, they know they're liable, typically, or they can be liable. Usually for breaking a valve, not doing otherwise, but, and I don't know, I mean, as far as replacing the whole water line, the, what I was told from the observer on site was, when they determine where the water's coming from, contact the property owner and determine it was from the, the, the service line leaking out by the house. Then, the property owner took over the repair of it, because it's, you know, city ordinance, it's, they're maintained. So, if Tony had said something, I don't, I'm not familiar with that, that's not how he related to me.
Yeah, I'm just sitting and sitting there and watching the work.
So. Yeah, so, we didn't observe the work being done, because it was property owner doing the work, we observed the leak, we observed the shutdown of the leak. It was curb stopped, so it was no longer leaking at the house, and then the rest of it was the property owners repairing it, so.
But it was a, it was a professional plumbing company that you said you guys would reach out to and ask. Their advice was that we don't know where the leak is, because the pipe's fixed underneath the ground. So they pulled it up, or was it me doing it?
I want to say property, I mean, you're, you're, you're contractor, and from what I was told, the leak was pretty obvious, because it was coming from the house, like, they thought it was leaking inside the house at first, and then they realized it was coming up right outside the house. I've got pictures of where it ran down the driveway, where the leak was located was, was pretty obvious based on what my construction interview related to me.
The initial report I got from the city, that was that water was pouring out of my house, I don't know if I would call that claim obvious.
No, that, that wasn't, you're right.
I had the two plumbers I had.
Yeah, that was the initial, that was the initial report, because it was coming from the direction of the house. When they started investigating it a little closer, it was, it was coming up outside the wall of the house, out of the ground, and the leak was there at where the pipe entered the house. So then it was, oh, it's not coming from the house, it's coming from outside the house, through the ground and up and down.
At no point did Riley or the city both come to that conclusion. Like I said, talking to Tony, he literally said, yeah, go ahead, replace it, and we'll deal with it later. I would assume he's acting on behalf of you, but, like you said, you, you wouldn't, you'd expect the contractor not to turn it off when they're not supposed to, but also expect them not to run on expired low case, like they've been found to do, and are currently being investigated by the Attorney General of the State of Iowa, or hitting gas lines multiple times with a shovel, causing damage towards replacement. Like, yes, normally I would expect the contractor not to do those, but there's a pattern of that, so just, just straight up, be like, no, I trust, you guys are literally discussing charging Riley for missed days and missing on the contract. But to say that you expected them to act as like a normal contractor in good standing, I, I have a hard time believing that. I know I'm coming off a little disrespectful, but just, this, this whole project is filmed.
Frustrating.
Yep.
All right, any further discussion? Here you go, Sue? It's not how this works, Sue. I call on you.
You called on me to.
Make a yes or a no.
Do we pay it? No.
The.
Which is the motion?
The motion was to not.
Not pay.
Then I agree with that.
So you would say yes?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
The motion is to bill Riley.
We're in the middle of discussions, or, or we're middle voting. Joel? Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
That's what she carries. Moving on to engineer's report.
Do you need my copies?
I did copy, I didn't get very far with them.
Well, I made them. As with everything else this year, January snuck up on me. So, Baldwin Street Reconstruction, we talked about this one a little bit already, quite a bit already. The, the only thing we haven't really talked about there is the stormwater outlet, work there. So the environmental clearances, they got as far as they could last fall, but they're still need to do some field visits during, during the right season, so they can't do that until spring, things start green, that kind of thing, so environmental clearances will be wrapped up in the spring. The, the small little construction exhibit that we're going to provide the city to be able to go, take it to a contractor to build it is, is in process, but, so once we get the environmental clearance report done, then it's dependent on the agency's approval after that, and we'll go to take it to a contractor to build as soon as we get that. Anticipate of that probably be summer next year, but kind of get the approvals, hopefully it's a cut and dry approval, but we won't know that until we get those environmental back, so that's in process. Tree and plant discharge, that's still ongoing for those final design contract documents, looking to did those here early this year, if that's where you guys want to go with it, or we can send them on our shelf and then make any time that works with you guys, so. We just have to have that built by end of twenty-seven, off fall of twenty-seven, which, at this point, gives us plenty of time. Woodlot stormwater improvements, I had that ready to send to you, and it's at my inbox, so I got it sent to you today, it was in my drafts, I thought I had sent it, and I was just verifying stuff today, and there it's at. So, you do have that, come in and sign on that, so. Request your direction on how we proceed with your review comments for that, if you want to just do it by correspondence, email, phone call, or we can set up a work session to look through that, however you want to deal with that, pass it around, staff council, whoever needs to review that, provide comments.
I will probably send an email, or send the email to Deb, and then we will just add it to next month's agenda.
We can, we can discuss it at council, yeah, yeah, and if that's what we're going to do, I might have Shannon Schultz, who's the engineer on that, will help me out. Might have him jump me for that meeting, but I'm, I'm used to have the, the brains behind some of the decisions, so. Is there a cost? We had a cost, I, I confirm that, I was confirming that today, because you had a cost on the date of the back of June. We didn't make a lot of changes since then, but I want to make sure it's the correct one, so I'm going to follow up with the costs on that for you. Yep, and then just some, some regular stuff there, we never got the, I never got the twenty-four engineering services agreement done last year, so we're going to try again this year. I mean, it's only been twenty-five years since we've been trying to get, you know, work with you guys, so, but we will, we'll get that, especially now that Rock Creek Bridge Estates looks like it's moving, and that was one of the emphasises for that, is that make sure we have differentiation intervals there, so. And then jumping down, segue with that, the, I'm not sure exactly what, the JAMC Real Estate Solutions, what they call themselves, but they have been working with the development team on the preliminary plan. They've read a couple of questions past me, I've shared some of the things that comments councils haven't passed, particularly with about the question on the knuckle versus the straight-through road on the northwest corner of that, whether there's a connection for the future development to north, or whether it's a, just a, what we call a knuckle, it's a cul-de-sac on a corner. So, there's some design considerations there, but we'll wait to see what they, what they submit on that.
I think a big part of that is that before the, we've got to solve the individual.
Yeah, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of factors that weigh into that of, how's this actually going to go? Is it going to go in our lifetime? There's also some engineering considerations, it sounds like, so, what I told them is I said, here's what I've heard from the council in the past, concerns they've had with this, that, and the other, but you got to make your case for what you propose, and if there's an adjustment for it or not, then you'll have to make. And if there's an justification for it for not, then you'll have to make that case, so.
The, uh, council had some, uh, uh, pretty heated discussion, uh, at, uh, meeting last month as to whether or not North Street should connect then, particularly, uh, under the, uh, new plan where the land to the north has been sold and we do not know if, uh, uh, there will be a connection, uh, back to, uh, Rock Creek initially, uh, or in the future. So maybe we should be looking at that as a, uh, uh, connection point, uh, which, uh... The council, previous councils did not consider.
Yeah, and, and I, and I recall some of those conversations and there were some engineering reasons for it. North Street's down here.
It's a hill.
The grade is up here. I know there's some concern with, uh, Santer Sewer depth and how far that can reach back into that corner. So, um, some of those things may weigh into it, but, um, I know they also talked at the time about the, the width of North Street, pretty narrow, and putting more traffic on that, but then explicit traffic between that and Rock Creek Drive, so, um...
I think one of the big issues is the time factor. We have an ambulance coming from the north, it would significantly reduce the time if there was a cut through.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, yeah, it, I have not seen what they're looking at there, but the, the preliminary plat, once we get that, that would be the appropriate time to comment back on some of the questions, you know, things like that, the, hey, look at this, don't look at that, you don't like this, that kind of thing, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll revisit all that, but I think we've talked about it earlier before.
That'll be spring, you think, when we'll get that?
I know they're working on it now, um, so here in the last month, he's stopped in my office a couple of times to say, hey, what do you think about this? And so, shared what you guys have said in the past, and, um, so, yeah.
Yep, well, you can, next time you can pop his head in.
Hey, if you guys look at North Street connection, because this is going to come up.
Get my heads up.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but moving forward, so, um, hopefully see something soon. Hardaway Nature Trail, I'll talk to Spencer on that one, quick update, there are just a few little punchless items left on that. They are looking to change order in some additional length, I think by Cambridge. So they're going to extend the project out that way. They got good prices or whatever, I don't know, but, um, so artwork is done, that change order may still be going on, but, um, they're going to wrap up.
They can run low through town here too.
Just around all the streets, it'll be fun.
Yeah. The, the only big thing around here that, other than just minor erosion control stuff and little punchless items, is they're still working through some of the fencing protections on the bridge. They've got the fence up, if there's some concern that there's attractive nuisance, you can get behind the fence and go on the, the concrete. Parapet, that's the word. So they're looking at some options to, um, add to the fencing to make it harder. I mean, you're never going to stop everybody, if they really want to get around there, they will. But make it harder and then also provide some signage, some caution signage. And then Spencer even mentioned getting some extra signs to provide to the city so that when someone vandalizes it or steals it, you can put another one up there to help, um, you know, protect your liability for that, so. So they're still working through that. Hopefully should be soon. Uh, and then I've got to reach out to Tony on the treatment plant, um, stuff we've been working on for the well quality. No, no news there, no, no update, anything new.
Is there, uh, does anybody know if there is any restriction on our bank loan as to, uh, how long we can leave it sitting in the bank before we draw on it?
I didn't see anything along those lines, there was no timeframe as far as when it was required to be withdrawn.
Because if they're looking at not starting until spring, then it may be a whole year from when we took, when we got the loan authorized.
Bubba says we're not paying that for stuff. We haven't taken it, yeah.
They've already paid it to us.
They paid it to us? When did they pay it to us?
When we first got it.
So we would...
So instead of your charged interest?
So yours being charged interest.
And does that mean we made an interest payment in December? And we'll have principal payments coming up here in June? And did we have a principal payment or an interest payment of the sewer that we made in December?
All right, there we have it. So no, there's no time restriction.
We got the cash, we're fine.
Only a thing I will... I will add one last thing, um, you had sent a question regarding some signage in the visioning plan. So I've got a, a preliminary answer to that. I sent him the visioning documents that you sent later and I got her back from that, so I'm just hoping to be in here while we're waiting, so hopefully we have an answer there, so.
This is the, um, crosswalk signage, uh, transportation engineer review, uh, location of signage required, so for a proposed...
The little diagrams that they did?
He has some initial thoughts and I'll, I was going to just fire him off and say, well, let's, let's take a look at the actual visioning plan because they were just generally big picture of obesity percent, but hopefully get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
I did some layouts of where, based on the visioning plan, where we would like it. One of the questions that I had was, uh, can we just, uh, move the, uh, crosswalk ahead sign a block and still cover two crosswalks? Or do I have to have, uh, crosswalk ahead, uh, a certain distance before the crosswalk?
And you, you talk about the crosswalk on either side of the intersection, the same intersection?
Yeah, we're looking at a possible intersection, uh, crosswalk at, uh, fourth and, uh, the visioning plan also has one on third. Well, to do the one on third, we have to move that flashing light further south, so that it's in front of the crosswalk instead of after the crosswalk.
Okay.
Well, could we have that, uh, one that's on the south move further south and cover both of those crosswalks? And the one on the north would already be in a good position to cover both? Or do we have to increase the number of, uh, crosswalk ahead signs? And then you have the crosswalk right here sign.
Yeah.
And that, that's...
So it, so the big question is the placement of the crosswalk signs?
Yep.
Not the crosswalk.
The crosswalk ahead signs.
The crosswalk.
Right, okay.
Can it cover two blocks?
So, I'll, I'll verify if you're, one thing he does say in general, M E T C D does not allow a school crossing assembly, school sign with a downward arrow plaque to be installed on approaches controlled by a stop sign. No, I would not recommend using language regarding stopping ten foot from a crosswalk, stop signs are required, or stop signs are required, vehicles may cross two crosswalks at an intersection. I don't know if that answers the question, I'll, I'll, I'll follow up directly on that one.
We wanted to have one crosswalk at each intersection with the little down arrow saying, here's the crosswalk.
Right.
With the crosswalk ahead sign with the flashing light. How far away can that be? Right now, it's, uh, three quarters of a block away from the one crosswalk that we have. Well, if we move it south so that it's three quarters of a block away from the new crosswalk on third, then does it also cover the crosswalk on fourth?
Which is a block and halfway.
Yeah, so otherwise you're stacking them up, it's flashy, flashy, flashy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which...
Okay.
Crosswalks on Baldwin Street are perfect, they're exactly what we were shooting for on the, uh, replacements. If anybody's walked down there or drove down there, they have, they have the high visibility crosswalks.
Yep, notice it.
Okay, I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
That's basically what we're looking to do.
And that is the call that I made to you when you were...
That we didn't connect, uh, okay, very good.
Trying to explain.
Gotcha.
What my question was.
Gotcha, yep, okay. Well, then I'll worry about hearing back from you.
No. He's probably heard enough.
Anytime, but...
All right, thank you Wes.
All right, appreciate it. Thank you for moving me up. Enjoy the rest of the meeting.
Back to employee handbook, if I can find it.
Six C.
All right, so discussion action on employee handbook. So we received the handbook back from the attorneys with amendments. And then we had, uh, Ken said some amendments today as well. So Ken mentioned on page thirty six, the handbook, we misspelled the world, the word wow as well. And thirty eight, format is weird, I forgot it just.
Maybe it's just one page.
There's definitely a note, but I, when I worked through it, it came back.
The formatting here just needs to...
The, the play, the page.
The, the one where he's had the format first and it looked like everything should have been centered on the page, but it is not, it's not centered on the sheet, it's, yeah.
Like page numbers are way off, but, um, on page eighteen, well, on the page two of the table of contents, as jury or witness duty, the witness is not crossed out. But when you go to page eighteen where they talk about jury or witness duty, witness is crossed out on every single one of them. So are we going with witness or are we not going with witness?
We are not going with it.
So that needs to be crossed out on the table of contents.
And usually these table of contents are automatically generated.
This is jury or witness duty is in red, but then on page eighteen, it's all crossed out, so.
Yeah.
Yep, good catch. I have a question on page nine.
I do too. What's yours?
Page nine?
Yeah.
Unless somebody has one earlier.
I've got a whole bunch.
Okay.
So are we going to go in order or what do you have?
Sure, let's go in order.
You were nine, maybe you did have the first one. Yeah, go ahead, you're nine, it's your first one, Sue.
The red paragraph at the bottom of the page where it's talking about double compensation and they've inserted a paragraph. And I have no idea what it means.
That is leaguer's.
Which should not be in a, uh, employee manual, it should be in English. And could anybody tell me what it means?
I believe what they're trying to say here is that outside employment, so if I am a city employee and I am working someplace else, the city has no official control, inspection, review, audit, enforcement authority of the individual during the performance of his or her regular duties for the city, no, that was backwards.
Yeah, yeah, for the other job, I agree, yeah, for the city.
I think that needs to be cleaned up.
Do we want the attorney to clean that up or do we want to clean that up as a council?
Well, as a council, what do we want to say? That, uh, his or her regular...
Should not be regular duties for the other, other appointment. Shouldn't say city. I think it cleans it up just by removing city.
Any outside employment
Yeah.
shall not be subject to the official control, inspection, review, audit, or enforcement authority of the individual during the performance of his or her regular duties. Now, if it's for the city enforcement authority of the city during the performance of the employee, employees' regular duties for the other business, then, yeah, that would make sense. I don't know if they're trying to say that. That's why I'd like them to tell us what they're trying to say and we can certainly then come up with a better way of saying it.
Uh, Deb, what was our total of them reviewing this?
Twenty-six hundred.
How much?
Little over twenty-six hundred.
I think we're just scratching ourselves.
And that is an option.
Yeah. Because it doesn't... I think the first sentence pretty much says what you want it to say and that doesn't really say much of anything as far as the city is concerned.
It's an insertion, we don't understand it, we can delete it or we can have them, have them ex, uh, answer, have them tell us what they're trying to say. And yes, we may have to spend another twenty-five dollars to get that answered.
Will you keep a running tab of things that we need the attorney to clarify? This being one of them, this is on page, page nine, under double compensation.
Well, let me ask the question, uh, maybe a more broad question. What is our intent with this document? In the school, you have a master contract which says both sides are committing to X, Y, Z. Is that what this is?
This is...
And what is this?
The employee is handed this and there is a form in the back that they sign that says that they have read and they understand and, uh, the terms and conditions in this are willing to accept the job based on this. It is not the type of negotiated contract that, uh, schools have, teachers have, with union representation and all that. This is a document which the city gives to the employees and the employees accept the condition of...
So they are acknowledging that they will abide by these conditions?
Yep.
Okay.
Which is why we need to understand
Exactly.
what's in there. So for now, we'll leave it as possibly needing clarification or we're possibly just deleting it.
We'll get clarification from them.
On...
The next thing that I have is on page seventeen, so anybody who wants to do that before.
I've got something more there. Go ahead.
You've got nine?
Number two, on the outside financial and business interest, inappropriate, it had an S in there and that shouldn't be because inappropriate use of resources.
The S is removed by the attorney, everything in red has been removed.
No.
No, not at all. If it's underlined, it's been added, it's crossed through, it's been deleted.
Yeah, that should, that shouldn't be there. And then, uh, under, under number four, where you get to the red, employees are not to use the facilities of the city, period. This includes city equipment supplies. Because you've got city, city, there needs to be a period there and another sentence started this... Cause you've got city, city, there needs to be a period there and another sentence started, this includes.
You're, you're talking about grammar more than anything.
Yeah, but it's still, if you want it to look right.
Well, they should have put city facilities, city equipment or supplies, or facilities of the city, equipment of the city or supplies.
Yeah, it's not working well.
City, city, yeah.
Worded like an attorney.
And is that a comma there after the city?
Yeah. So the facilities of the city, city equipment or supplies, the city's badge, uniform, business cards or other evidence of office for, for employment.
And from a grammatical point of view, instead of saying city equipment or supplies, saying equipment or supplies of the city.
You're right, yes.
Which, and then you, you'd have the same problem with the next one.
Yep.
Where you'd say badges, uniforms, business cards, or other evidence of office or employment for the city.
That's why I thought a period and then put this includes city equipment or supplies.
Oh, period, and this includes, start a new sentence.
That, yeah, that's what I thought would be the best way to handle it.
Okay, I don't have any problem with that.
So the S is referring to the fact that there's on section two, that there's three pieces that are not limited to making or receiving phone calls, handling correspondence, receiving business, that's why they added the S. Uses uh, resources, replace my assumption.
Okay, leave that one.
What, of the city equipment, did we decide what you guys want?
After it says facilities of the city, put a period and then insert the word this includes.
Good. Anything else on page nine?
So. That uh, that paragraph or that, that double compensation in the outside employment?
Yeah.
That actually is coming from Iowa code sixty-eight B dot two A, conflict of interest. The outside employment or activity is subject, is subject to the official control, inspection, review, audit, or enforcement authority of the person during the performance of the person's duties of office or employment.
Okay, read it again.
The outside employment or activity is subject to the official control, inspection, review, audit, or enforcement authority of the person during the performance of the person's duties of office or employment.
Okay, so what does it mean?
I think what they're saying is that the city holds authority over a part-time job. As in, we have the ability, if their job performance is neglected or, or misrepresented in the other position for another organization, we have the ability or authority to get.
Right now it says any outside employment shall not be the slip peak.
Right, but the Iowa code says is subject.
That's why we'll get that explanation from them.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to have them do that one.
Okay. Anything else on that? Everybody got anything on ten?
Moving on.
Seven.
Moving on.
Twelve.
I have something more on twelve, I just got one of it. Is on the city property, do they, does an employee get permission from the supervisor or council to use things? Is that, is that what the procedure is?
So you're talking about today or what this?
Personal use of city property, what procedure do you want to follow there?
So this was asked by one of the city representatives or one of the city employees? What was that question, Deb?
It says in extreme emergencies, the use of city property may be allowed with the following restrictions. And he thinks that that you can use it with.
Rather than having the extreme emergencies, can be used with the prior approval from the supervisor and or city council.
Yeah, he doesn't think it should be extreme emergencies.
So my, my response to that is this is personal use of city property. The personal use of city property should only be in extreme emergency situations, as in responding to a fire call. Because that actually switches from the city responsibility to a fire responsibility. Or if you are working and you have an emergency happening at your home and you need to respond, I don't have a problem with the person taking to be able to run, to get, take care of something.
Maybe not extreme emergencies, just put in emergencies, cities may be allowed instead of extreme emergencies.
But I don't take the lawnmower home or the snow blower home to vote.
No.
No.
That's certainly going to pass by, okay.
And so what are you're saying?
I think we need to remove the extreme.
So we strike the word extreme and it would read in emergencies, the use of city property may be allowed with the following restrictions. You have to have pre-approval from the immediate supervisor and or city council, is that the entire city council?
That would be.
You have to wait until first Wednesday?
Second, second.
Second, second.
All day on a holiday, right? Or do we need approval?
Second all the time, second all the time.
Prior approval must be obtained from the immediate supervisor as needed.
I'd just say media supervisor and or mayor, I mean, that's what the mayor swore.
Uh huh, to make those emergency decisions.
I would say and, forget the or, cause it shouldn't be one or the other, or should it just be the mayor?
Yeah, I think it should be and or mayor. Uh, I think it should just be or mayor, supervisor, immediate supervisor or mayor.
I think it would just be, oh, just mayor.
Yep, I kind of agree with Doug. My pre-approval must be obtained from the mayor. Which could be done by text message, I mean, you don't need to go and.
They need to be paced, paced.
By the same token, Tony's a supervisor.
Yeah.
So why do I need to take away his responsibilities?
He's a supervisor, I guess of uh, two part-time, yeah, okay. Uh, immediate supervisor.
He's got more, he's got more news too.
Mayor.
Yeah, the summer help.
Yeah, summer help, you got winter help, you got.
Snow, plows.
Yeah.
Mowing, you can.
So we're changing it to immediate supervisor or mayor.
That we can remove the A, right?
Yeah.
Immediate supervisor or mayor.
And we're getting rid of the word extreme.
Well, I vote no, just for the record, I'm opposing that song.
So no to extreme or no to making the change?
I think it should fall above, it should go to the mayor, is what I'm.
Well.
I think in a situation where if we had a full-time mayor that was present in town all day, that would be just fine. I unfortunately have not. I know that you may, you are a mayor pro tip, may be able to be reached, but I'm not always able to be reached, so. Supervisor is on duty during those hours. I think it's important that supervisor has that responsibility.
That's why I said I'm opposed.
Now, is, is writing a uh, city lawnmower home for lunch. Uh, a personal use of city equipment.
Depends on the situation.
I agree, I agree with that.
If it's, if it's closer for me to, to get to my next mowing job, than running clearback to this, to the town hall and it, you know, increases efficiencies, I'm with it.
So on a case-by-case basis, the, that's what the mayor swore to make those decisions. Anything else on page twelve?
Or the supervisor we have.
He was talking business in his city vehicles.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, did we remove extreme?
Yes.
Thank you. Page thirteen.
There is a contradiction down on the part-time at the bottom. What they're saying here is a part-time person has to be more than thirty-two hours. But other places in this doc, oh, I'll give you a chance to read. Other places in this document, on page twenty-six has a person working four hours a week, or a part-time person working four hours a day, five days a week, it's twenty hours. So thirty-two hours is a problem where it contradicts a couple other places where they talk about part-time and it certainly doesn't have to be thirty-two hours.
I think you're right, I think twenty hours would be a much better suited. In order to be considered twenty, for part-time, you have to work at least twenty hours per week. That covers all of our current part-time employees. Everybody else is temporary and they agree to work more than sixteen hours per week on a regular basis.
Well, if we don't change the thirty-two to sixteen, uh, then don't we have a gap?
What else would we call them though?
Well, that's, my point is we have three categories. A temporary sixteen hours or less. A full-time is forty hours.
Temporary is sixteen hours or more. For you to work more than sixteen hours.
But only for three months.
Not to exceed three months.
Not to exceed three months. And then the part-time is.
And mowing lawns, or mowing the cemetery is going to be longer than, so they're considered a part-time.
We can clean it up and just call it all part-time. Anybody were willing to work more than one hour?
Well, yeah, kill this more than thirty-two phrase.
Yep.
Less than forty hours.
Less than forty. That's a good call.
And then there's a couple places back there that might also have to have a little reflection.
But.
Is temporary gonna stay the way it is then?
More than thirty-two hours PPW, semi-colon, and less than forty hours, semi-colon, and when appropriate, rotate shifts, weekends, days off. Okay, so just get rid of the words but more than thirty-two hours PPW. Right, leave the semi-colon and everything else.
So I think we should probably change the temporary uh, to a less than. And then change the months period.
Get rid of three months?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think the temporary employee should be a less than, simply because we're, we're trying to keep them from being a part-time employee or a full-time employee. But there's times when we might have a snow situation that ends up working more than sixteen hours in a pay week. Or a mowing season that uh, doesn't work sixteen hours in a pay week because it rains for six to seven days.
Why don't we just say all other employees will be called temporary?
I guess delete temporary, you know, I mean.
Or just forget the hold-on thing.
We got, we got full-time and part-time.
Yeah.
I mean.
That's part-time is less than forty.
From a personnel perspective, uh, is there benefits, anything uh, that we hang our hat on for the use of the word temporary employee?
Yes, vacation accrual.
That's what I'm hoping.
Because temporary employees don't qualify for vacation.
All right, so we can't just get rid of it.
Is that right?
And IFRS.
And IFRS, IFRS purchases, I'm just a big one, forgot about that.
So, and is there a definition from a payroll perspective as to what a temporary employee is? The number of hours or anything else before IFRS kicks in and all that other stuff?
It's so much, you can only earn so much a month for three months or something like that.
For three months, so that's when the three months comes in?
If you earn under that though, you're fine.
And it's a dollar amount, it's not an hour.
So.
I would have to.
IFRS has changed it. Um, Iowa has temporary employees are excluded from IFRS when they are first hired. However, they may become eligible for IFRS coverage if they meet certain criteria such as earning at least a thousand dollars in two consecutive quarters, or working at least one thousand and forty hours in a calendar year.
Why don't, why don't we just use that information for temporary?
They work full-time or part-time, and they work for more than one company at a time. They're often hired to cover absences, fill temporary vacancies, supplement companies, shortages. Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that, is there temporary employees, someone who's hired to work less than six months or on a seasonal, irregular, or on-call basis? That covers it?
Well, and we want to have the dollar amount, less than a thousand.
Thousand dollars in two consecutive quarters?
Earning at least.
Excuse me, wait, if they meet criteria, earning at least a thousand dollars in two consecutive quarters.
That's how they become IFRS.
That's how they become.
That's how they become, so they have to work, they have to earn less than a thousand dollars in two consecutive quarters and or a thousand forty hours. So as long as they don't meet that one thousand forty hours, then they don't.
Which is half time.
Yep.
So Iowa temporary employee, as an employee who works less than seven hundred and eighty hours per fiscal year are considered at-will and not covered by collective bargaining. We don't have collective bargaining here.
Seven hundred and eighty.
I think that's the state employees versus.
Right, I was just thinking, I mean, that could be a, that could be a.
Well, that's a more restrictive definition, isn't it?
It is.
No, maybe that's what we should be using.
If they're, what's that come out to, per week?
Seven eighty.
If you take seven eighty divided by forty, uh, four goes into seventy-eight.
I'm thinking.
Uh, eighteen times, so it'd be like eighteen weeks. Which.
Well, so, so if you do by fifty-two, cause it's fifty-two weeks in a year, and the seven eighty divided by fifty-two is fifteen. So that's, I mean, we said employee agrees to work no more than fifteen hours per week.
Okay, but if you take.
Is our goal to basically just keep them from becoming an IFRS employee?
Or is.
And have a classification so that they don't be. And have a classification so that they don't meet the benefits criteria for city employment. Because if that's our only two goals, which is my understanding, that the only thing we need to include is that they work less than a thousand and forty hours in a calendar year, and that they're considered part-time, maybe a seasonal, they must work less than six months.
If they work more than seven hundred and twenty hours, uh, then they're no longer a temporary employee according to the state of Iowa. Isn't that just what Joel said?
Is that?
Seven, seven eighty.
Seven eighty?
Is that the DAS code, or is that?
Yeah, the, the DAS.
Administrative code versus the Iowa code?
Yeah, that's.
If you use the seven eighty, and you have somebody working forty hours, uh, a week, then, uh, in less than five, if they could only do that for five months, and they would still be a temporary employee, they wouldn't be eligible for IFRS. And we've had this situation at least once, uh, in the city where we've had somebody leave, we've had to bring somebody in and essentially, uh, fill in until we could get somebody else hired. So, you know, we could just leave it seven eighty, which gives us the, and not talk about how many hours a week or, uh, how long, it's just seven hundred and eighty hours.
So, chapter one thirty-three identifies the temporary employee in the state of Iowa as means, this is in the general code, not the, not the administrative code. Means an individual who's employed by a temporary employment firm to provide services to clients, to supplement the workforce during absences, seasonal workloads, temporary skill or labor market shortages, and for special assignments and projects. Temporary employment firm means a person engaged in business and employed temporary.
But that's out of the income tax exemption for certain military pay, so.
No, it's actually, sorry, I was just checking the thirty-two.
Okay.
Well, I think what we.
It's probably part of the tax code. It doesn't, doesn't constitute anything else, but, uh, go ahead.
I don't think we're gonna come up with any specific language, uh, tonight unless we stay until midnight, uh, which I'm not inclined to do. Uh, and I think we just kind of mark this paragraph on temporary and come back at our next meeting.
I'm okay with the seven hundred and eighty hours if that's what others want.
It seems to be the most restrictive, and without putting the number of hours per week or anything else, gives the city flexibility.
Others have thoughts or concerns over it.
I just found it, but I locked it.
I think we should identify that they work less than six months on a seasonal, irregular, or on-call basis. And that must be up in the seven hundred and eighty.
Looking at the ASME contract, just to use it as a definition. Um, temporary employee should be defined as employee hired for seasonal work for a period of less than nine consecutive months, or for a particular purpose or project.
Well, if you had a limit to seven hundred and twenty hours, uh, yeah, they could work for nine months to thirty hours a week. Rather than saying nine months, let's do the seven hundred and eighty hours.
That just, that kind of controls it all.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we're gonna work less than seven hundred and eighty hours on a seasonal, irregular, or on-call basis?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if there's any question of your status, check with the mayor, I like that.
All right, uh, page fourteen.
I don't have anything. Nope.
Fifteen?
Well, fifteen, yes, I don't think the word employment policy, okay. Qualified handicap or disability, I don't think that sex should be in there, I think it should be gender. Gender identity, whether it's male or female.
Fifteen?
Uh, fourteen.
Oh, oh, so we all go back to.
Yeah.
Okay, so what do you think?
It says, okay, it is our goal that all applicants for employment and all employees will be treated equally without regard to race, color, religion, qualified handicap or disability, and I don't think sex needs to be in there. I think sexual orientation, gender identity, this.
They are not the same.
No, but I don't think.
So what it's saying is they are including sex.
Yeah.
Male or female?
Exactly, with your sexual orientation.
Just because you're a female.
Because I'm an Asian female.
Or because you have an orientation that.
I know what you're, I know.
Changes what you choose, or that you are an outward of displaying individual with different anatomy. So I think this is a legal terminology that covers it all.
Oh, I just thought there'd be a better way to put it than.
They're, they're three different things. Anything else on that page?
No.
No.
Page fifteen?
Nope.
Sixteen?
Not for me.
Yes.
Sixteen? We'll be on the same page again.
Yeah, should, down there, questions about the policy complaints.
Yep.
Okay, who is subj- subjected to harassment? And should be in there, it looks like it's crossed out.
I think they're, they're simplifying it. Any questions about this policy, or any complaint by any employee or applicant who is subjected to harassment, they'd be directed to the employee supervisor.
Yeah, so we've already defined harassment.
We've defined what harassment means in, in page fourteen.
But should.
Yeah, are you?
Just the wording of it.
Why don't you, your thing where you look, okay.
Should be directed to the employee supervisor, it looks like it was crossed out, and I think.
So the should, should, should still be, should be crossed out.
Oh, should be directed to.
Yeah, yes.
No, it should be included.
Yes.
Who is subjected.
That's what we're saying.
To harassment.
Should, should be.
Be directed.
Should be directed.
Now, read it, read the whole thing straight.
Okay.
Question should be directed, is what it says.
Any questions about this policy, or any complaint by an employee or applicant who is subjected to harassment, be, maybe the words should be shall instead of should.
Yeah.
Shall be directed to the employee supervisor.
Yeah, it.
Putting the word should makes it optional, doesn't it?
Yep, shall, shall. All right, anything else?
The last thing on that page, the employee should immediately contact his or her supervisor if.
The employee does not wish to communicate directly with the person whose conduct is, conduct is offensive.
And take out the A too.
Okay, so the if applies to both A and B.
Yes, or that, yeah.
So does it need like a semicolon or something there?
Probably, no, it's separated.
Yeah.
Or at least indicate that there's a list.
Yep.
Following.
Longer list, yeah.
And take out the A on, on page seventeen.
You have to zero that down, there's a lot of letters on that page.
You're talking about the A at the top of the page?
Very, very tough.
I wish.
No, it's a list, yeah, A and B right there.
A and B goes, what's that?
To be wished.
Okay, I misread, and, but it says and/or, and is that the end of the sentence or?
No, B is.
That goes to B.
And/or communication with the pending party has been unsuccessful.
I do have a other problem on this page.
Okay.
Uh, and that is in the paragraph, just down a little bit where it says, if the city determines.
Fourth, or the second red paragraph on the page, if the city determines that prohibited harassment has occurred.
Yes. It will take appropriate action against any person found to have been engaged in prohibited harassment. The type of discipline administered will be dependent on the severity of the conduct, as well as any other factors presented in the particular circumstance. Employees violating this policy are subjected to discipline up to and including termination. I have absolutely no idea why I had that marked. Because that.
You're sounding really good, I thought it sounded good.
More airtime.
Now, I had it marked and I have no idea now, so it must be okay. Further down the page, under maintaining confidentiality, the red paragraph where it starts out, the city strictly prohibits retaliation against any person by another employee, um. So, what we're talking about is retaliation against, uh, an employee by either a supervisor, or the mayor, or council, or whatever, right? Is that what this applies to?
As it applies to maintaining confidentiality.
Okay.
So if somebody breaks confidentiality, the city strictly prohibits retaliation for the investigation or other actions that take place due to that confidentiality.
So, um, let's say that, uh, we had a personnel issue, we went into closed session, uh, we had a discussion, and after that closed session, I went out and blabbed what it was all about, okay? So what does this say about that, that nobody can retaliate me against me for it?
No. They prohibit retaliation against any person or another employee or the city for using this complaint procedure. So in other words, if you, if somebody comes with complaints, and then you retaliate against them for making a complaint, that's not acceptable.
Okay. So this is, uh, retaliation uh, against using the complaint procedure.
Yep.
Okay.
And/or breaking confidentiality.
Not limited to termination, uh, demotion, suspension, failure to hire, or consider for hire, failure to give equal consideration in making employment decisions, failure to make employment recommendations impartially. And so, if I did any of those things, uh, as retaliation for somebody using a complaint procedure against me, that's prohibited.
Yes.
Okay, well. I was having a hard time.
This, again, very, very legally used.
I think we need to put that as a legal basis.
All right, anything else on seventeen, Steve?
Nope.
Anything on eighteen?
Nope.
Nineteen?
Nope.
Twenty?
Yep.
Twenty-one?
Nope.
I do there. Under overtime, the red part, employees shall not work overtime without advanced approval from the mayor. And the reason I asked originally is, is this a procedure that they are agreeing to? Employees are agreeing to that procedure?
They'll be expected to once it's, that was a change that we added.
But it's already in there someplace, it was on the.
No.
Okay, oh, yeah, the next paragraph, at the bottom, uh, right above the paper. No time over forty hours should be worked without mayor's approval. So I don't think, I don't know if we're following that. Steve and I are starting to work on some numbers, and we've got some employees that are going to be well over their yearly allotment. We are six months right now, and they've got a whole lot more than halfway to their, uh, contracted amount. The other thing I would suggest on this, rather than saying just overtime, if I am contracted for twenty hours a week, it wouldn't be overtime for me to work more, but I, I wonder if we should also put something like overtime slash additional time, that I'm working more than I'm contracted for. So those are the things I want us to discuss.
So what are you asking for?
Uh, right now, this just deals with overtime. And overtime is defined as being anything over forty hours a week. So if we have an employee who, like Carrie, who is only supposed to work twenty hours a week, uh, and she works twenty-five, then who has approved the other five hours?
It's not essentially overtime, but it's over budgeted.
Right. It would have to be approved, for the over hours.
But that, in that, since she was also hired to cover me when I am gone.
Right.
And that would be a reason for approval.
Yep.
Certainly would.
It's just a matter of how to get approval placed.
So if I suddenly decide to take vacation day, and we don't have time to ask for approval,
how, how do you take vacation without getting approval?
It's just an email.
Sick of time, then, if I'm sick.
Then it's approved. Oh, well, yeah, if you're, if you're ill.
You're sick, sure.
Uh, and you stay home, and she has to cover, uh, the office, he would still, somebody would still notify the mayor that, uh, you're not in, that she's.
We don't know, we don't know.
Oh.
Usually I would.
I think, I think Doug has a point, that if we are, if we have a condition of employment for an individual.
Right.
That they only work thirty hours, or they only work twenty hours, uh, then, uh, if they are going to work more than that, it's not overtime from the perspective of this paragraph, but it is time over and above what they were hired to do.
So then we would probably want to put that under the part-time employee, uh, definition. When hired under a working hour arrangement, or number of hours per week, prior approval must be maintained or approved prior to working hours in excess of.
Some things that get to me, I don't care. For instance, we had our lawnmower, our cemetery mower. When we budgeted that, we said, well, when you don't trim, it's twenty hours of mowing, roughly one. When we budgeted that, we said, well, when you don't trim, it's twenty hours of mowing roughly one a week. They'll be more or less, we understand that. And when you do trim, it's twenty-four. Those people, uh, had forty hours. In fact, they had overtime part of the time when they were hired to do either twenty or twenty-four hour targets. So that's where we're going to get into financial overspenditures, over expenditures.
So part of that, what they were, they weren't just used for mowing. They were also, it was minimal use of one of them for, one of them was used designated only for mowing. The other one was used for mowing and other duties that made it that. There was lots of trees, tree branches, cleaning, things along those lines. So I don't know, there's, how, how do? I guess my thing is, we need to define what it is, which part of the goal do we want to reach? Because if I'm paying somebody ten bucks an hour, I'm really not too worried about that person working their forty hours or getting close to that forty hours. I don't want him to become a full-time employee. But if I'm paying somebody fifty dollars an hour, I'm going to be much more careful with those hours. But it also has to fall within the budget of the law.
So your recommendation is for how, just to leave it the way it is, talking about forty hour overtime and leave the management of staff to the supervisor and the mayor? Okay.
For the record, I don't agree with that, but that's.
What are, what are you wanting?
I'm wanting people to stay within their hours. Unless there's a real reason to not stay within the hours.
I agree.
Does that need to be in the handbook? Is that what you're saying? And what that is, language in the handbook?
Well, they don't know that they are expected to comply with it if it isn't threatened someplace. And for continuity in the future, I. It just, it.
I, I think it ties the hand too much. We have, Dale said that, uh, when we took down all those trees, there was a lot of branches and stuff that needed to be picked up.
We have no trimming. Besides what.
We were, we were cutting the trees. We were. Wasn't the contractor, it was us. And so it took extra time.
But that would have been approved.
Let's go to the.
We're saying non-approved. I think that's, is that what you're kind of saying is non-approved?
If we know we've got that, then the mayor's going to say, yeah, we need to put some extra hours in. But the language here, the, for example, still in the same paragraph, if ten hours are worked on Monday, six hours should be worked on Tuesday. You should work your personal schedule unless the mayor tells you otherwise to stay at your target, whatever it is.
Well, that's in there. Right?
It is, but the numbers aren't saying it's happening.
Well, that's a different issue.
Okay, okay.
This issue is, does this policy read the way we want it to read? Not.
And I'm not picking, I'm faulting, you're saying our numbers are getting, getting much higher than, than what we are projecting them to be, especially this year for some reason.
True.
So, okay, the language, I'm, I'm good with.
Uh, twenty-two.
Yes. Timesheets. The employee will make daily entries in their timesheet showing the time they start and the time they stop. I think we've talked repeatedly about expanding that so that it's not only the time they start, but it's also the time spent in designated work activities and the time they stop. And we, as a council, say what those designated activities are. Right now, it's roads, water, sewer, general, because that's how we allocate their time. Passed a bunch of tree ordinances which require us to keep track of the time spent on various tree activities. So there might be five things. Maybe Deb and Dee, Carrie, went back in time there. We have, I mean, they, they may have general and, uh, utility billing and finance. So they may have things that are different than anybody else. But we, this just says start and stop.
Yep. We have our new payroll system coming with online capabilities with start and stop via phone. Are there breakouts in that where a person can stay clocked in and designate specific times doing tasks?
I don't remember and that wasn't really shown. I would think that it would could with being cloud-based and. But I'm not gonna.
I think we're going to see some improvements with that system because we were trying to start a spreadsheet that they could enter their time based on what they were doing for the day as well as their signing in and out. If we can include that with the, much easier, quicker method, I think will be further ahead. So I don't.
So I would suggest that we insert after start a comma and the time spent in designated work activities, comma, and then pick up and the time they stop.
But the time you might manage all of those different things, like time in, time out, and it takes time to.
I had to live with that for thirty-five years of work. And yes, it's a pain and the solution is you don't have too many categories.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just going to say too many. I can see for budgeting reasons and, and breaking it out, payroll out to different departments. I can see doing it for that. But other than that, it gets to the point where you're just keeping track of anything and not getting anything done.
Right.
All right, anything else on page twenty?
Payday. Let's change it from Thursday to Friday.
We're leaving the rest?
Yeah. The reason I changed it from Thursday to Friday is we have our council meetings now on Wednesday. And so periodically, we're going to have a council meeting and then the payroll the very next day. And, uh, minutes have to be done and everything else. I'd just say that let's give a day, uh, to get all the paychecks done. They could be done at eight o'clock in the morning, uh, whatever.
Solves the other issue, doesn't it, Deb?
Yeah.
Sure, it's going to piss everybody else off because they're going to have to wait an extra day to get their paycheck. But I, I worked for Pope County when they used to, used to pay you on the fifteenth and the last day of the month. And then.
Did that for twenty-four years.
Yeah. And then they changed it that you're going to get paid every two weeks. Well, the very first paycheck was like having to wait three weeks, uh, to get paid.
So we have.
Life happens.
Just like social security, the third, I pay it on the third Wednesday of every month. Well, sometimes there's four weeks in between, but sometimes there's five weeks in between.
Yeah.
And.
Makes a difference.
It makes a big difference.
So I just think Friday instead of Thursday would make life easier.
We have the option of having direct deposit now with this new system, correct?
I think so. I'm not going to guarantee that. I would think so.
Do we want a condition of being able to say that the direct deposit on your paychecks may be an option? Or do we just want to leave it as paycheck?
I, I, if the paycheck is issued on Friday and it's direct deposited, or if it's written in paper, it wouldn't make any difference. Except that if they do direct deposit, Deb could probably get before she leaves home and it would then be accounted the next day. So.
Anything else on twenty-two?
No, I don't have anything.
Yep. Can you scratch it ahead?
The Friday paycheck, it still doesn't matter to me whether it's Thursday or Friday because I do checks on Wednesdays.
Cause the pay period ends Tuesday.
Yeah.
But how could you do paychecks before the day is done?
Because my, my pay period is Tuesday night. So I get all of the, everything, all of the time cards, either Tuesday night out when they leave or Wednesday morning. So I have time.
They leave at five o'clock on Tuesday.
Not the guys.
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty, three o'clock.
And that's all, that's all it takes you? You can finish it all in a half an hour?
No, she doesn't do it till Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
She does the payroll Wednesday morning.
Uh, we also have.
I have a really good day. It will take me only an hour to two hours to do.
Well, if I'm trying to solve something that's not a problem, then leave it the way it is.
My, sometimes it's a problem because I have mayors that work out of town. So that's the, the signatures are always my problem.
But you won't have to worry about that if they have the rep, the repos.
And if you have to get the agenda out on Tuesday and you have to get packets done and all that other stuff on Tuesday, are you going to have time on Tuesday to do the payroll?
I think what he's saying is, does this buy you the money?
It's not going to buy me anything.
Thursday, having the option to do payroll on Thursday. Cause you wouldn't have to have it done Wednesday.
Well, there's no reason to change things if you don't have to. So just leave it the way.
What it basically was though too is technically you could have it done Thursday.
I could do it on Thursday. We talked about.
Does that help or no?
We talk. You guys have long meetings and then I'm tired Thursday morning.
Yeah. So this must be it.
We talked about some, I can't remember what, when it was, but we talked about. But Friday is fine, whatever you want to do. Doing something on Monday so that we could have it Monday night and we have Tuesday then to go over all of the agenda and packets. We talked about that.
Well, requiring that everything be turned into Deb on Monday.
On Mondays, yeah. Good luck. Well, if they don't, they don't. They just do them later, but. Been doing this sixteen years. Good luck.
Yeah, she ends up printing multiple times. So it would be nice if everything.
Well, tonight there was a.
They need it on Friday then.
Tonight there was a pile of reports that had the punch put in there.
So are we leaving it Thursday or Friday?
It's up to you guys. It doesn't matter.
I think if, if she's okay keeping it the way it is, why, why fix what's not broken?
Yep.
Okay, stays Thursday.
Yep.
And it's Thursday until eleven fifty-nine, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, just checking. In case I can't make it Thursday afternoon. But I do understand. Um, twenty-three.
Nope.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, employee meetings. The, the bold line there, the employee is entitled to his or her regular rate of pay for the time spent at the meetings. Does this include travel time? If it's at the meeting, is travel time on their own? Getting to work is your responsibility today, your work site is in Ames because you've got a meeting. How do we want this applied, I guess is the question.
I think it's only right to pay them if they're on their way to the work-related meetings on their way.
They would have to punch in prior to leaving.
I think they're on balance.
Well, but that's the way it should be because they should be paid for the time they're working while they're working. They're driving because they're working at that time. It was a necessity to be in a different area.
But they don't pay Dave to drive to Newt, or Dale to drive to Newton.
Well.
That's going to my work site.
Okay, all right, that was a question.
Yeah.
And.
Like if I, if my job tells me I have to be in Waterloo next week and I leave from my home, my pay starts from the time.
You start from home?
Yeah, that's why most.
If I'm not going to work and I'm going to another location to go work, my pay starts from wherever. But if I, so my, if I'm going to work to take a state vehicle and then I'm going to go to this location, I don't get paid until I get to work in that state vehicle, go to that location.
And you're paid through lunch, straight through that as well?
Well.
If I'm in a training that goes through lunch, it goes through lunch.
I would, yeah. I didn't keep track of hours. It was just a day here, a day there.
But it, you know, if the training has a one hour, you know, break.
Cause that ends up adding a lot of hours. Just questions.
Wouldn't they take normal lunch break though, no matter, even if you're, if you're going to a meeting out of town?
Most do. And sometimes I work through it. I don't, I don't know. But that was a question I had.
Well, we're going to get to lunch breaks later in this.
Twenty-four? Twenty-five?
Nope.
Twenty-six?
Nope.
Twenty-seven?
Nope.
Twenty-eight?
Nope.
I wonder why impunity is considered a disability? From the woman's point of view.
No, it just says disability is caused by pregnancy.
Disability is caused or contributed to by the pregnancy. In other words, if you.
Above and beyond the normal.
Develop gestational diabetes because that would become a disability. Twenty-nine?
Yes, work break.
Why?
Uh, we're wild. But then it says, while circumstances may require deviation, it is the intent of the employer, it is the intent that employees will be given two fifteen-minute paid rest periods are allowed during each eight hour, get rid of are allowed, two, uh, fifteen minutes.
There's no language.
Paid rest periods during each hour.
Eight hour.
Eight hour work day.
Oh, I've been missing my paid.
Huh?
I've been missing my rest area.
Yeah.
I didn't know I got it.
Lock the door, take it out for fifteen minutes.
They may not be taken at the beginning and end of the day. A sixty-minute lunch break, not paid, is provided during each shift. And how are you doing with your sixty-minute lunch break, Deb?
Thirty.
Uh-huh.
What's that?
Well, according to this, you don't have the option.
I would say normally in an eight-hour day, you get two fifteens and a thirty. You don't get it. This is equalling out to, to ninety, ninety minutes.
But sixty minutes unpaid. So.
This, this is an eight to five job with a one-hour lunch and two fifteen-minute breaks. This, this is an eight to five job with a one-hour lunch and two fifteen-minute breaks.
And that's better a little, a fifteen-minute break every four hours. I mean, it used to be, I don't know if it's still.
Well, I haven't been taking my fifteen-minute break and I take a thirty-minute lunch.
Well, you have violated the policy.
Right.
I'd rather keep it the way I do it.
Which, which brings the point.
Sixty minutes is way too long.
Do we want to require employees to take a sixty-minute lunch hour? That's what this says.
I think the option is more impactful and work. If I have the option to take an hour and I choose to take an hour, that's my opportunity. That's a nice work purpose. But if I, on a regular, gonna take a thirty-minute break, I'll take a thirty-minute break. Other thoughts?
Do I have to take?
You're only allowed.
Five minute meeting, we've already covered that situation. But for the sake of safety, I think that a break should happen.
Uh, lunch break is not required by, uh, by the federal code.
If they changed it, then.
Well, I understand it is not required.
Uh, if you're working an eight-hour day, it is.
I like, I do two fifteen-minute breaks is sufficient.
No, I don't believe that's correct. But that's why we have all these little devices.
Right?
Just answer all kinds of questions.
I just sit and watch the people that are darn good with them do it.
Federal law does not require employers to provide lunch breaks or other meal periods for their employees. It's an option.
Is a misspelled word there? They left off an E in progressive disability may be issued for.
Uh, we're not that far yet.
Federal law does not require meal or rest breaks.
A, I would change that last sentence by striking sixty minutes. So that it reads a lunch break, non-paid, and then insert of up to sixty minutes is provided during each shift. So that like you said, if they don't want any, they don't need any, if they want a half an hour, they wanna do it in fifteen minutes, they wanna do it in forty-five, whatever.
It's not taking a lunch, a reason, or, or, uh,
No.
to get overtime, to just, just took my hours. Okay?
It should be.
It's an option to get out early.
A sixty-minute lunch break is optional? Would that be?
I like to use.
A lunch break, non-paid, of up to sixty minutes is provided during each shift.
Does that work for him, babe?
That work for you, Deb?
Sure.
Okay.
Anything else on twenty-nine?
Nope.
Thirty.
Uh, nope.
Forty-one.
This is the format page where everything looks like it should be centered, but it's left justified centered.
I think by this time I'm about full six, so it's probably gone bad. Formatting a lot.
Yeah.
Thirty-two. Thirty-three.
I don't have anything else in here. Well, I'm gonna take a nap.
I had, no, I didn't have any until forty-one where the page numbers aren't right.
Forty-one.
Page numbers. Lou, is this your page number?
Uh, yep.
Cool.
Oh, no, that's Deb's.
That's mine.
Okay, that's next. I'll use it. Do you have anything else besides that?
Nope, I heard your page.
Cool.
Forty.
You're counting on forty?
Yeah. And it said, where it says I am acknowledging, that I am should be out. Is that right?
Yeah, they cross it out.
Okay.
I acknowledge.
I acknowledge.
Yeah, okay.
Am I good at that?
That was it.
All right. So I only have the one item for the attorney to review. I will make additional recommended changes by the council and present back after attorney's review before the final. Other questions, concerns?
Um, do you need a motion? Is this a discussion or action?
I move that all the discussion that we had tonight to be entered into the record and the mayor act upon what is appropriate.
I'll second it.
Further discussion. Jerry, Doug?
Yep.
Sue?
Yeah.
Joel?
Yes, Steve.
Yeah.
All right.
You're giving the mayor a very broad action.
At least we acted on it.
Uh, discussion, action on law enforcement.
Move approval of the contract.
Is the city.
Can't discuss it.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Until we get a second.
A second.
Further discussion.
Okay. Um, I've had the comment made by the, by the sheriff's department that they don't know what the ordinances are, but they should, should they be able to look that up somewhere on their phones where they can see what they need to do? Rather than saying, I don't know the city ordinance, I can't enforce it.
I think the most appropriate solution to that problem is that if we are calling, uh, the sheriff's deputy out uh, for a, uh, specific purpose that, uh, we identify what the ordinance says, we give it to the deputy, and then the deputy's gonna know what the ordinance says.
Okay, and who is to call? Do all calls have to go through city hall or city clerk or mayor or?
Nope.
Somebody, or can a citizen just call it in?
A citizen can call it in and what we should instruct the deputies to do is to contact city hall to find out what the ordinance is. City hall can provide them a written copy of the ordinance. They don't have to rush right out there.
Unless it's seven o'clock at night, then is there a place where it is available for someone to look up and ordinance?
It's on the website.
What website and where? Cause I try to find it.
City website, city website.
Is that up to date?
MaxwellIowa.com.
On the changes that have been made?
MaxwellIowa.com.
MaxwellIowa.com. That should be.
Right there, code of ordinances.
What was our last code application?
Yeah.
Because.
I think the last time I looked at it, it was not up to date.
Oh, right now I can't even get it.
And do, do the residents know that they can look that up? I mean, how are they supposed to know if they've got a problem, you know, or thinks it's a city ordinance problem?
Not sure why it's opening up in Facebook though.
Well, that's just it. You don't know. It's screwed up. I tried.
When are we getting the re-pubification, Deb?
Some year.
Huh?
Some year.
That's not a good answer. I'm sorry.
When I talk to Justin, I'll ask him.
Okay.
I think we need to talk to Nancy, she's the one running this, and find out why it's trying to open the court of ordinances in Facebook. And all those is a picture.
Yeah, that should be on the city's website, not the.
It was, it was, cause that, that's where I've downloaded it from.
Yeah, it's not working.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a broken one right now.
It's always come up before.
Yep.
Yeah, I downloaded it off there.
Oh, none of the links started working.
Yeah, well, you send a email to her, talk to her, see if you can get that operation.
Yeah.
Under the city's website, then, okay, rather than that welcome to Maxwell, it shouldn't be on Facebook.
But that has anything to do with Facebook?
No, I don't know why it's doing that right now.
That's mistakenly corrected itself.
Yeah, all the, none of the links are working.
Because that would be helpful if they could just then look it up.
That's, yeah, it's, it's normally out there. That's, this is just a.
Yeah.
Like I said, that's where I've downloaded it from. That's why I've got.
Residents can also come in and look at the codes, right, or the ordinances right back there. There's a hard copy in.
Library has a hard copy.
Library has hard copy.
I, I don't agree with Sue that people can just look it up themselves. I think that the, there is so much in there that they're going to find a, something, and it's not going to be germane to their problem. And they're gonna think that it is, and they're going to then have, uh, provide it to the deputy and.
Well, but the deputy should be able to look it up. It, it should be available for them. Somebody calls in about whatever and the deputy should be able to look up, see, something that he can do to take care of it because I had.
I, I will defer to Joel on this. Uh, how easy do you think it is going to be for the deputy to, uh, uh, come down and, uh, look up whether or not, uh, somebody's, uh, parking illegally?
They're, they're not gonna take the time to read through the ordinance. Um, they'll look at it. If it's blocking a roadway, if it's, you know.
It's meeting the state code.
Yeah, if it's meeting the state code, they'll take care of it. Um, I mean, they might walk up and talk to the person that owns the car and be like, hey, you know, you're blocking so-and-so's driveway, can you move it? Uh, they're, they're not gonna tow it, you know, ticket it, whatever. I mean, that's.
Somebody's, somebody's parking, uh,
I, I have.
perpendicular to the road and not blocking the sidewalk. Is that a violation?
Perpendicular?
It would depend upon.
It's sticking out in the roadway.
Not sticking in the roadway because the right-of-way, it's down by, uh, uh, the mayor's house where the right-of-way is like thirty foot wide.
It is completely possible in front of my house where I can park my Suburban and not be on the road or on the sidewalk. Perpendicular, facing my house.
Is that a violation? Let me answer the question. Yes, it is a violation because it says that you park in the direction of travel.
Yeah.
Parallel to the road unless it specifically says it's an angle parking area. Well, do I expect the deputy to be able to parse all that? No.
If it's not a problem, then it shouldn't be.
But somebody's complained about it.
Cause, cause that's what I look at is.
Somebody's complained about it.
If I pulled up on that, you know, the Suburban sitting there just not blocking the road, not blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah.
It's in a right-of-way. I mean, you know.
Just happens to be an eighty-foot right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't see a problem with it.
Going on there. The neighbor that called in thinks it's the end of the world.
I might go talk to the, to the, to him and say, hey, you know, your neighbor called and said, but they don't like how you park, just letting you know.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd put four more out there. And then, and then mark down that I was here for fifteen hours so that the city gets credit.
Yeah.
Kind of get credit for.
I would agree with Sue. We need to have the ordinance available so that people can read it. It is a public document. Where I disagree is an expectation that the deputy is going to be able to, uh, read and, uh, come up with an enforcement procedure.
And here's the deal, each city has different ordinances.
Right, I know that.
They're not gonna, you know, they've got ten cities that they gotta run around in, not including the ones that have police officers in, in them already, but which they still, they, they can still write tickets in. Um, they're not gonna look up for thirteen different cities in, in the county.
They're not going to know it, but if the situation arises that they would need to, for some reason, it should be available to them.
Which it normally, it normally is.
Yes.
It, it normally is.
We should make sure that it is on the website and the website works. Because they have things in their car that they could access the website. Now, I don't know how, well, since it's in a PDF form, they should be able to do a search and all that stuff, but I think that's an expectation much higher than, uh.
And, and.
But it says issuing violations under city ordinances upon request.
Yep.
Well, and this.
So that, that's where my question came.
And this contract does not say it. I've seen contracts that, that have it in there where it says that, that the city administrator is responsible for providing a code of ordinances for their city to the sheriff's office upon this contract.
I know that they gave some of them to an officer.
Yeah, so I mean, they just don't have it written in here because Story County doesn't ask for that.
Yeah.
So.
I do have a question on G. One G. If it is just a township, then, uh, does the sheriff dispatch at no cost?
No.
Well. Who do they charge?
They, the county, it's part of their taxes that they pay, um, to the county.
So if it's a township, fire department, uh, where, then there would be no charge back to the township for dispatch?
Right. If they live in Indian Creek.
They're incorporated under the county.
Well, yeah.
Then that's part of their taxes that they pay.
So do we wanna give the fire department to Indian Creek Township and get rid of this?
It's not gonna save us anything.
Why?
We're still responsible to pay as a city organization.
But we, they would not be dispatching our fire department.
But that's part of the sixty-nine, or the seventy dollars and eighty cents, or eighteen cents that we pay per capita. Um, if we, so this, a lot of the research I did on this, so, so the, if we had our, if we had our own police department, okay, and all we had to do was be, the, the police officer had to be dispatched by Story County, the fire department had to be dispatched by Story County, and we had to use Story County to take our prisoners too. We would still have to pay seven dollars and two cents per capita. No, the, the city would have to.
If the city, even if the city did not have a fire department.
The, the housing was more, so I think it's like twelve dollars total.
He, even if the city did not have a fire department. If the city didn't have a fire department and they had their own police department, then what dispatching would be done for the city fire department? They don't have a fire.
It's, it's part of seventy dollars and eighteen cents. You, you cross that out.
I understand the news for us.
He's, he's got two rates.
This is what my law.
He's got two rates. He's got, he's got where he provides, uh, law enforcement services, dispatch and jail. And then he's got, if he just provides dispatch and jail.
My question's hypothetical. Let's move on.
Oh, Steve, uh, this is prepared for the city of Maxwell, Story County, okay? So probably that is for Maxwell since we have a fire.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying it's hypothetical. So.
Okay.
I'm too. It's, it's sort of like, uh, uh, Ken's question about, are we getting two and a half percent more, uh, service since they've increased it by two and a half percent? Well, absolutely not. I don't think they've increased it two and a half percent. We're not getting two and a half percent service. And the fact that we have this list of things, yeah.
Yeah, so basically if, if we had, I'll, I'll use city of, of Huxley. Okay, city of Huxley still pays for C and. Okay, city of Huxley still pays for C and G, but their G would have dispatch of city fire departments, first responders and police department. Because Story County still covers, they still dispatch for Huxley.
And they have their own police department.
They have their own police department, yep.
Okay, I have a question on L. Or it, it says routine patrols and special patrols upon request.
Right.
You can't just go up the main streets and patrol that, gotta start patrolling some neighborhoods, how do we get that accomplished?
That is for the mayor and the mayor pro temp and the city clerk, they're the only ones that can make those requests.
Okay, well, not a request to patrol in neighborhoods?
Yep, and they are the only three that can make requests for additional.
Other than the main street, that's what I'm asking.
Who's, who defines routine patrol?
Yeah.
Well, routine patrol to me would mean I drive through every street in the city, and then, and then I can head out.
Yeah.
Or, but some of, some of them, their routine patrol means coming down here and sitting by the rodeo grounds and then leaving. So.
Yep.
We've, we've all seen, so.
How do we address that to give, make sure we're getting our pennies correct?
We can.
Have the mayor, mayor pro temp or the city clerk call.
Well, don't we have a, uh, representative on the, uh, sheriffs?
But if you read the contract, paragraph three on page two, the mayor, mayor pro temp and the city administrator shall be authorized to make requests to sheriff for performance of specific law enforcement services specified in this agreement. So those are the three people, well, city administrator, but I'm guessing they mean, oh, I don't know, that, they may not mean.
I will, I will tell you, ten of us mayors last year attempted to get additional patrol time, additional patrol time in each one of our communities. There was met with a resounding no from the sheriff, that he couldn't guarantee any times to be added to the contract.
Uh, our question is, he is committed to providing routine patrol. Can we get a definition of what routine patrol is? Is routine patrol to come down and sit in the park and not do anything? Or is routine patrol coming down to town and driving a, uh, significant number of streets? If not every, every time, but at least.
Well, and, and part of their, eh, so, I don't know how Story County is doing it. I know in Polk County, the way we had, had it down there was when police officer rolled into town or deputy rolled in town, they would get on the radio and say, put me out in Elkhart. Dispatch would log that that patrol was in, in Elkhart. Now, they might just be driving right straight through and then they say, put me out of Elkhart. So two minutes and, you know, they're done.
Whereas here.
I don't know if that's being done.
The deputy says, I'm going to Maxwell, and they mark it, and half an hour later it's here and ends up driving through, says, well, I'm leaving Maxwell, of course, he only just here two minutes, but the log shows thirty-two minutes.
So, uh, I've got this question put out to the captain, to the chief deputy down there. Um, the times that I'm seeing on the sheriff's reports that are, uh, for instance, there's a, a information call for two hours and forty-five minutes. And I just did a complete, took an information call yesterday, ten minutes, and then by the time I had on my information and wrote my report, I was, I had an hour into it and I was done. Two hours and forty-five minutes for an info call, I think is a little long. I think what it is, is from the time that you call sheriff's dispatch and say, hey, I need to talk to a deputy, okay, about something going on in town. By the time that deputy is free from another call, you know, or they're on their way here and they get somebody speeding or they get dispatched to, to a higher priority call, so that one sits on the back burner. Well, then when they finally get down here, they go in, they get five minutes worth of information and they leave, it's still showing two hours and forty-five minutes, because of the time of call to the time they cleared the call, is what I think is happening.
Here is one for information that's seventeen hours and thirty-one minutes.
See, last, and then November, we had one that was fifteen hours.
And then there's another one for fourteen.
Yeah.
For information.
Yep, and that's, that's what I think is happening is that those calls are getting pushed down on the call list because they're low priority and that's why, so.
I mean, they're still running.
Right, and then I had the question last month about the burglary for four hour, or four minutes. Well, started looking at it, it was from Dollar General, it was at ten thirty-one at night. Well, they close it, then, you know, lock up at ten thirty, they set their alarm, go out the door and they trip that alarm. So the alarm company calls dispatch.
Burglary.
Got a burglary alarm, well, by, by that time, the employee goes back in, resets the alarm, talks to the alarm company, says, oops, I made a mistake. They clear the alarm, give them a code, and then the alarm company calls back up there and says, nevermind, employee error, okay, we're, we're back in service. Four minutes, they never even made it to town, but it's still listed on, on that, on that sheet as being in town for four minutes.
Be interesting though, they had, uh, GPS on their vehicles, we have GPS in many state vehicles.
They do. But.
Well, never pull.
I can, I can, I can pull, find out where they're at right now, but.
That's the report I want, kind of that they spend in town.
Right, and that's, and that's what I'm trying to get with Captain Lenny about.
Something confidential, and there are limitations to what they can provide as far as time in town, so there is an extenuating circumstance when we have these longer periods of time. They might be working on a case, sitting in their office, doing research, doing background checks for things over those lines, but some particular town.
And that's, that's what I was looking at too, was like, cause it has their officer number listed and who, who the officer was assigned. Well, I just know that that officer is a patrol and not a detective, so they're not spending fourteen hours on a call investigating it.
Yeah.
They're, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Um, sure, because we're still in discussion, go ahead.
Okay, I, I live in, I live in Maxwell and.
What's your name?
I know in years past, like, what, say what?
What's your name?
Missy, Big Rose.
Okay.
Fourteen hundred Rock Creek Drive.
Thank you.
So I know years ago, when, when I moved here, um, I would call the sheriff's office and ask them if you were drive-by because we had like a, a lot of our housing, you know, was being dropped off. And I know can't I call the sheriff's office and, and have them, if I think something is wrong and, and ask them to come drive, do a drive-by, won't they do that like periodically?
Yeah, they should.
Yeah, they should.
Yep, that's request for service by a citizen, that's totally acceptable.
Yeah, and so, so most people could do that if they, if they stopping that issue, so I, you know, I, I was just curious because I didn't hear anything about those.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the topic of contracted people?
They, uh, nope.
Did you forget to record?
To start conference recording, press one, the recording has started. Please note that your storage is almost full. Please log in and delete recordings or purchase more storage.
You guys got to clear that it's a long.
Number three says, the mayor, mayor pro temp and the city administrator is authorized to make requests to sheriff's office for performance of specific law enforcement services specified in this agreement, which are on the previous page. Uh, we do not have a city administrator, we have a mayor and mayor pro temp. And I would like to know from the sheriff's office whether, uh, the city administrator can be interpreted as the chair of the public safety committee for the city of Maxwell. I mean, it's not a city administrator, but it is as close as we get. At least in the area of public safety. Does that sound like a reasonable request? Which would, in this case would be Joel. I mean, if there are, if they allow that, three people in larger communities, why not allow three people in a small community? I'm ready to vote on the contract that was put in front of us.
Can you say that to the sheriff or?
Um, yes, thank you, uh, Sue.
Are you ready to vote on the contract in front of us?
And that was.
It was a motion.
How long ago was her motion?
Motion was to approve.
Motion to approve.
Oh, yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Reluctantly, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Certainly could be approved.
Yes, absolutely.
Agreed.
Yep, um, on to. Discussion action on resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five zero-two directing the sheriff to pay all regular monthly bills in the city each two weeks or has the bill.
No approval of this annual resolution?
We need a correction.
Yes.
Well, but, let's give a second, cause then we'll.
Okay.
Second.
Further discussion.
Correction is, whereas the city council is now meeting the first Monday of each month, I think it needs to be changed to the, but second Wednesday now.
Yep.
What is, why is it, is it twice? Oh, nevermind.
Actually, I never even looked at it. All, all I did was update the back page, cause that's the.
Yeah, I accept the change as a friendly amendment. It was the second.
Oh, I see.
Hearing any further discussion? Vote? Sue?
Yes.
Doug?
Yep.
Steve?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
All right. Discussion action on tree removal.
Ken's note?
Yep. Um, I think Ken was asking for, we haven't had our six trees taken down by the company illegally dumped. Um, I'd like to recommend that the lawyer goes after them and see if they're prosecuting down the six trees, lawyer please.
I make the motion that we proceed as, uh, suggested by Ken.
Can you turn that to the lawyer, please?
Second.
Sorry, I went ahead of myself.
All right.
Discussion on that.
So it's plus court costs, plus lawyer fees?
Court costs, lawyer fees, and the cost is twelve hundred dollars per tree. Um, Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
All right, there's more to his thing here, um, so, yeah.
That there was more trees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had some, uh, scout parks, some of the, of the list that need to be removed. Um, another bid, so he's asking for another bid to remove the trees in the scout park in three oh four Main Street. Um, can we put that out for bid, that's basically what we're asking here.
What's the note got, uh, one sixteen Metcalf?
That's a, no, the FFA park is another one of our parks, there's a tree there too that I've had complaints about.
Okay, so we need to add that too?
Yeah, but we, we should find tree, all the trees that are dead, dying or diseased and add as many of them as possible to, uh, a bid to be removed. It's an absolute liability for the city, uh, so we need to take care of it.
So Ken and Tony need to go out and find trees or?
So it sounds like.
Well.
Or hire somebody to come in.
What I think we should do right now is, if we know of dead trees or trees that, uh, need to be taken down, let's put them into a bid, we may find more, uh, when the leaves pop out. And we may have to do it, do it again. I don't, I think it'd be, I mean, if you go down the street and all the bark is off a tree, then yeah, it's dead. Uh, you don't have to have leaves, but if it looks like it might be alive, it might be alive.
So.
Forty-hundred stack.
Assuming that there's at least three trees at the scout park, and then three other trees listed, one sixteen Metcalf, five twenty-one Fifth Street, three oh four Maxwell, six tree bid. To start? With the potential for.
And, and see if Tony is aware of any others.
Okay.
The, uh, what was the one on Maxwell?
Uh, three oh four.
Oh, that's the James's, right?
Yeah.
Three oh four, yeah, yeah.
And then the Eddie Erickson tree, he talked to you and you brought it to council the other, while back.
The Eddie Erickson tree was removed at least two years ago.
Okay.
And so it's before we started any of the tree removals.
Well, you, you wanted Tony to go up and see if it was in the right of way or not.
Yes, it wasn't the right of way, but.
It was before we did tree removal?
It was before we were doing tree removal. I took an ash, two ash trees out of the right of way ten years ago, maybe fifteen years ago now. So.
Okay, well, I, he called and asked again if we would update, so.
I can understand why he would, he's on limited, uh, income, I have no idea what the tree was, what its condition was. And so unless we could find out more information.
Committee?
I'd put it on a back burner at this time.
Okay.
He can talk to me if he wants.
Okay.
I don't get to talk to very many people.
Yes. Oh.
And we've done six nineteen Baldwin, so we're at resolution twenty twenty-five zero-three hazard mitigation plan, right?
Yep, uh, discussion action on resolution twenty twenty-five zero-three adopting the story by any twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-nine hazard mitigation plan.
Move to approve.
Uh, second, and we need to fill in some names.
Discussion.
The, uh.
That's a different.
Fill, fill in the, for the alternate members.
That's a different.
That's, that's a different.
Oh, that's different?
Next digit item, we're starting hazard mitigation.
Story County Emergency Management Commission, so that's different, huh?
Yep.
Okay.
That's six I.
Okay.
Uh, further discussion on the mitigation plan? Okay, no, Doug?
Yeah.
Sue?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. On to Discussion on Action on Story Kind Emergency Management Commission 2025, Leadership Corpsments. So jurisdiction of Maxwell.
Move that the mayor, Joel, and, uh, Ken be appointed as primary alternate and second alternate respectively.
Second that?
Discussion. So what I do know of this is that in order for there to be a quorum in these meetings, there has to be either the mayor or an elected official present at the meetings. Usually able to, but, um, but understanding that our... It works out because our alternate is also an elected official.
Many communities have, uh, an appointed alternate member would have the fire chief or the EMS chief because they are involved, uh, in this emergency management thing. And, uh, since both of them... I mean, we certainly could have Scott or Tony represent us and go to the meeting, but then it'd be a question of, well, are they...
They wouldn't be able to vote, is the issue.
Right.
They wouldn't assist with the quorum, so...
And I think Joel and, uh, Ken have a handle on it, so... So moved.
Sue?
Yes, we've just got two then on there?
Joel, the mayor, Joel, and Ken.
Joel, okay. Yes, I did say you...
I seconded that.
Nobody did.
Steve seconded it.
Oh, no, I moved.
Oh, you moved, I thought you seconded it.
I seconded.
Doug seconded.
All right, we're gonna start the vote. Sue? Doug?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
How many times did you start it with me tonight?
Oh.
I know.
Congratulations, we have a meeting next Wednesday.
Yay! All right, um...
You guys did.
Yeah, Emergency Management Commission, that we were just voted.
I move that the departmental reports be received and filed.
Second that.
Further discussion?
I got a question for Deb.
Yes.
If people call... If somebody calls in with a complaint, do you report any... I can remember years back that you used to report to the council on your sheet, or when it was your time, or whatever, what the complaints were. And I haven't heard any complaints, is there something...
If I had a written... If I had a written report complaint, I would put it down.
Okay.
I haven't gotten any written reports.
That's what I was wondering, what determined what was going on? Gee, nobody's complained.
Um, I won't say that they haven't complained, but it's just...
Yeah, it hasn't been a written complaint, okay.
And you have the...
That answers my question.
You have the sheriff's report, right?
Yeah, right here, sorry. Um, it's really short.
On this...
I'd like to do that, please.
Is this... I was told that this was going to be, or read somewhere, that it was going to be, um, an auction. And at... For this.
The chili soup kickoff?
Right. That it was going to be an auction. Any auctions are considered to be gambling, and they have to have a state gambling permit. Yeah. Auctions are considered gambling. Bingo is considered gambling. They have to have one. Uh, anybody that has an option for anything, what I was told is that they require a state gambling permit.
Deb's an auctioneer, he doesn't have a gambling permit.
He's an auctioneer, but the person who's having the auction should have a permit.
The person that he is representing to sell all of their items has to have a permit for gambling?
Well, that's not gambling.
It's kind of my sentiment.
No, I'm...
Uh, there's nothing listed on here as having an auction.
Well, there was somebody going around town asking for money and showing that if your number is called, you win this. That's an auction. And a previous posting on Facebook said that they wanted these baskets so that... For the auction. So that's something...
We're gonna do it.
They need to do it, or they could be in trouble.
Sure.
Just...
It's raffles. They do raffles, they have to. But if it's just an a silent auction, or an auction, nothing says they have to there.
Old settlers had to have the auction down there. They were trying by the gambling commission.
Give them the skill or chance.
That's a raffle. Old settlers, there's a raffle, not an auction.
Well, they had... They had to have it.
And he said...
Well, yeah, they had to have it for a raffle. We had to have it for a raffle. They sold tickets, that's a raffle.
That's what they're doing.
Uh-huh.
That's what they're doing.
I don't see anything on there that says they're selling tickets to anything. I haven't been approached.
It was on Facebook.
I know there's a $10 fee if you're gonna eat, or a $5 fee if you're gonna eat macaroni.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go for the cheap man's meal myself.
Oh, this is the taste, though. It's a sampler.
Right.
You don't eat much.
There's five at least... Anna said there was at least five mac and cheese in her today this year.
Yeah. Joe used to do one.
You say?
Yeah.
Joel?
Um, other than what we've already discussed, I've got nothing.
No, motion to file.
Oh, motion to file.
Filing all the departmental reports.
And rather than reading through them at the same time.
Ah, gotcha. All right. Yes.
Let's see.
Yes.
Sue?
Well...
Your third this time.
Thank you, uh... I'll address the issues I have there. Okay, yes.
Doug?
Yeah.
Uh, Council of Mayor report, Steve. That's a big binder.
Yes, it is. Well, I already asked my question, has the sewer interest, uh, been paid? And Deb said yes, it has. I didn't see it in the, uh, monthly, uh, up through December, end of December, as a... An expenditure, but... I don't know.
It's an automatic withdrawal. I probably haven't put it... I don't think I've put it in the...
Oh, that makes sense.
I got the paper saying that they got it.
Okay. Good enough, that was all I had. Oh, wait. Jan, since he's not here, he had the sledding hill. Uh, is in dangerous condition. Uh, there's a large piece of concrete, uh, that needs to be barricaded off. The sledding hill's in a dangerous condition because they didn't get the apron next to the cement, uh, filled in. And so you come down the hill and you just go smack into that.
That email was sent. That's all I can say on that one.
The email was sent to him.
To the staff to backfill the hill down the road, down the path.
Uh, they're not gonna get it done this winter, but can they at least put barricades around the concrete?
Yes, also the...
Most of the dirt that was there has been moved up against it or close to it, but we need a lot more dirt.
Hello?
Happy birthday, Ken.
How are you?
Tired.
We were just... There... We were just to the council and mayor reports, and I just did your report about sledding on the hill being dangerous, and a large piece of concrete. And the mayor said, uh, he's sent out emails and it's gonna be taken care of.
Perfect, thank you.
But not till spring, in reality.
Well, yeah, and re... The adding of dirt probably won't get done, but I'm sure that the, uh, concrete, the barricades around the concrete should be done.
Yeah, as long as somebody comes in there.
Yep. So I'm done. Sue, your turn.
My turn? Okay, where would...
Is it my turn?
Not yet.
Nope. You weren't on, so I went ahead and did yours.
Okay. Um, what are the possibilities of having the... Any ordinance changes or the minutes? I know we've talked about the agenda, but being posted at the post office, City Hall, the entrance to Toots, or places like that, so residents have the opportunity to read the minutes from previous meetings? The reason I'm asking, because I would like to know what is the subscription rate for the city of Maxwell? I would bet that not even half of the people in Maxwell get that tri-county times. And that's where it's all published, so how are they gonna know?
Meeting minutes are right up here, right?
But they're not gonna come in and... They're not gonna come in and do that. They need to know if an ordinance has been changed. They need to... They need to know what we did. We did accomplish something, we didn't just sit here. And I think that if they have a right to know. I think that citizens of the community have a right to know what we have decided and done at the meetings.
I hear you, Sue. Citizens have to want to know, too.
Nope. Post in the, uh, minutes, once they're typed and approved, uh, at the bank, uh...
Yeah.
Toots's and the post office. Uh, we can give it a try for a while and see what happens.
You gotta find places on their boards to put it.
Yeah.
Because a lot of my minutes are two or three pages long.
Yeah, you have to staple them together so that they can flip through them.
I'm not tall enough to put it in the... The post office.
I can relate to that.
I can only reach the bottom. And then if you're lucky, there's room to even put an agenda there.
Send Carrie.
Send Carrie? She's not much taller than I am.
Maybe a smidgen.
The mayor just took on another job, he could do anything.
You are... You are absolutely correct. I've posted stuff in those locations in the past and finding space, uh, so that, uh, it doesn't cover anything else. Uh, nothing covers it.
Why we try...
It is a challenge, but, uh, if we try it for a few months and, uh, it becomes, uh, too onerous or impossible, at least we've tried it, then try something else.
Doug, can you leave a copy of the minutes on the counter for anybody that comes in and wants to review that? Or...
You can run that through.
Could it go on the website?
I do put it on the website.
You did put it on the website?
I do.
Put it on the website?
Not the... Not the Welcome to Maxwell, but on the city of Maxwell.
Yeah.
On the Maxwell, Iowa.
Too many places to look for.
Have we ever went to, uh...
Welcome to Maxwell, not us.
Maxwell.Iowa.gov as a URL for our website?
It worked for like three months, and I reached back out to Department of Management, and they weren't able to help me. So I don't know. I think it's a problem with the fact that we have a... Somebody else doing it. And that their server wouldn't handle the multi-user name. So basically what it was is, it basically would pull... If I typed in Maxwell.Iowa.gov in my Google search, it would direct me to that website. That's as good as I can get. Uh, because they own the URL of Maxwell.Iowa.com. And I can't change that without interfering with making it so nobody can get there. It basically up rousses the traffic. So I had a secondary routing of the traffic.
A redirect, yeah.
A redirect off of the Maxwell.Iowa.gov, but for whatever reason, it's working. And I have been able to figure out what that happened. I think if the council decides at some point that we wanna pay for our own server and somebody to manage it and get what we pay for, and change the name, I don't think it would be a problem. I'm tech savvy, but not that far.
We will always keep the Maxwell.Iowa.com just so that it doesn't get picked up by somebody else and impersonate the city, sort of like old settlers is impersonating old settlers.
But does the city of Maxwell actually own that URL?
Yes. We paid for it to... A number of years ago, and I think we continue to...
Yeah, yearly.
I'm sorry?
Yearly, we pay for that.
So we pay for it, but it should be the redirect.
Yes, it should be the redirect.
And the...
The final site name should be Maxwell.Iowa.
I have one more, come on in. I'll get it this time. We've been hearing a lot of gunshots. I know my dog has, and somebody... I know when I go down and take care of Dinah and, uh, Snowball, she's petrified of the gunshots, and it seems to be on a regular basis coming from that neck of the woods.
Funny season.
Well...
It's also a clear one in Iowa.
This is after dark, so it wouldn't be hunting.
There's a shooting range just on the other side of the railroad track, south of town. It might get some echo. Anybody outside of city limits has free right to
Yeah.
shoot their guns all over.
It's loud, like it's close, very close. So just letting you know, it's... I'd like to know who and where and go have my own shooting range.
On the far northeast corner of the city?
It's coming from over by the trailer court. Because when you're in mom... At mom's house, and you stand out back, you can hear it coming from that direction.
Yeah, coming from the southwest. Yeah, and it's loud.
But there may not be any law against somebody
No.
firing off, uh, a weapon, uh, in the unincorporated area. I mean, you can't call the sheriff and...
So it has to be so far away from housing, isn't it?
Yes, yeah. But, uh, so far, it's like on repeat.
But it doesn't include your house. You can shoot next to your house.
You can shoot right off your porch.
You just can't shoot next to somebody else's house. So I can sit on my own property, but I would...
Yeah, but I... If they were that close to town, that's why I was just saying.
Yeah.
They have to be so far out.
It's hard to say how close they are, because, you know, there's no crops to echo the sound or to baffle the sound, so you're getting much more travel with that. Unless it's snow covered.
Speaking of snow cover, who did the plowing this time around? They need to go back to school on how to plow a street.
Now, our policy on the snow plowing is that you plow the traveled portion of the lane, not curb to curb.
One lane?
You plow the traveled portion. Yeah, they do the traveled portion right here.
Well, have you tried to park in front of the...
You don't do the parking. You travel... You do the traveled portion.
Okay, go to the post office and... Okay, but the post office and you fall on your fatootie.
I mean, that's the policy that we've established as a council is.
When?
All right, any else?
Any policy of the council can be reestablished by the council. No.
Joel.
Nothing.
Deb?
I had a question. Are, are the new law, dog leash laws, we voted them in already, right?
Yep.
Have they been published? Some people that walk their dogs are questioning, do people know?
No. They don't. That's another reason for my asking. Put on the website.
So as a reminder, codification takes forever, apparently. But it's also a year behind. So whatever we establish this year, while it may be the intent, the council makes it effective today, doesn't necessarily get noticed to the public immediately. How many laws start in January? State, state houses.
State bunch.
They're not even in session, is it?
The legislature.
They set their, their starting points.
When it, uh, becomes effective. And so do we. Uh, and most of our ordinances say it becomes effective upon publication. And Deb keeps track of that, so, uh, I'm sure that the leash law is in effect. I'm also sure that very few people know about it because, uh, they don't pay attention to, uh, the city. Yes, we are doing codification. That particular change should be included in the codification. Everything up through, uh, changes made through December thirtieth should be in the new code when we receive it. Uh, and then we should get a, huh?
Only up through where I turned it in.
Well, then.
And that was in October, I think.
Well, then, anything else after that, we should be turning in and asking them to include it. It can't be that many.
Okay.
That was all I had.
The, uh, and then when we get our copies, we should have a PDF version, which we put out on the website. Ken.
You fell asleep.
I'll be. Thank you. Oh, everything else, um, are we considering to do that?
Move approval, the consent agenda, uh, Joel cannot mo, approve the November thirtieth, but Ken, everything else.
November twenty.
November twentieth, he was not at that meeting.
Not listed on the December fourth meeting.
Yeah, you are, aren't you?
Were you here?
Well, I seconded something, but I, but I don't see my name on the roll call.
Okay, I'll change that.
Good. Letting the changes. Can I get a second?
You're here in spirit.
You didn't call in, maybe. I was, you did once, I think, I can't, I don't know.
I think I was here for the December fourth. And there was one that I called in, like, like I was late calling in.
I'm sorry. Were you in sex, were you calling before you got on the plane?
Uh, when I was in Georgia.
Nope, you were here.
And November twenty first, it's got my name. So I, actually, I'm just here for all three of these then.
Okay.
According to the other two, has my name there.
I've got you written down.
So in that case, move approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Sue.
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Ken? Deb, Steve?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
I did it without you poking me in the swat.
Ken.
Each time.
Ken. Ken, you want to adjourn?
Joel, you did.
Joel?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Yes.
We're adjourned.
Darn it, nine thirty.
Actually, that's, that's what I thought it was gonna be.
Are we off, Deb?